For as much as they gotta do they. No, me.
Ready to go. You got somebody?
Hey Mayor, did you notice our clock says 2 o'clock?
That's one of them automatic. I'm gonna mention that. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being a part of our group today. If you by any chance looked at the clock behind you, apparently that has one of those automatic deals that daylight savings went into effect. So, we're not an hour early, it's really 3 o'clock. We're glad you're here. Called a meeting to order today is a Prescott City Council Combined Workshop and a Voting Meeting. Today's Tuesday, November the 4th. And with that, we'll have the invocation. We're honored to have Reverend Kimball Arnold of St. Luke's Episcopal Church. And Mayor Protam Lamerson will lead us in the pledge.
On this election day, let us pray. We are grateful for the right to vote, one of the most cherished rights of citizenship in the United States, and the basis of our democratic form of government. And we are grateful for the freedoms in our lives. Bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. To the President and members of the Cabinet, to Governors of states, Mayors of cities, Council members, and to all in administrative authority grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of their duties. To Senators and Representatives and those who make our laws in states, cities, and towns, give courage, wisdom, and foresight to provide for the needs of all our people and to fulfill the obligations in the community of nations. To the judges and officers of our courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be safeguarded and justice served. Teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we all may faithfully and honorably serve. Amen.
Just before I lead us in the pledge, I'd like to thank all of our police officers I see in the audience today and all of our firemen for keeping us both safe on the streets and safe in our homes and businesses. Thank you for who you are and for what you do. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kirkandall. Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Kukneal.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Oh, my proclamation, today we have four. And I'm going to do the first one. Because in eight days, four years ago, I was a guest out at Yavapai Regional Medical Center. And the gist of this proclamation has a lot to do, I think, with the fact that I haven't had a headache since. And it's been four good years. So Dale Black, Yavapai Regional, would you join me? This is a proclamation, the Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, which is November 3 through 7, 2014. Whereas the city of Prescott is pleased to join Yavapai Regional Medical Center, located in our city, as it celebrates Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, November 3rd through the 7th, 2014. And whereas, Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes through optimal blood management. And whereas, patient blood management is the appropriate provision and use of blood, its components and derivatives, and strategies to reduce or avoid the need for a blood transfusion. And whereas, Patient Blood Management Awareness Week speaks to the concerns of every person that have the best health care available to them, respecting individual preferences and beliefs, and continuing education of health care professionals to provide that care. And whereas, Yavapai Regional Medical Center is staffed by professionals with a commitment to improving patient outcomes and educating the medical community about best practices in blood management. And whereas, we commend the members of Yavapai Regional Medical Center for extending themselves in service to others according to their commitment of improving patient outcomes. Now therefore, I Marlon Kirkandall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, and on behalf of the citizens of Prescott, hereby proclaim November 3 through 7, 2014, as Patient Blood Management Awareness Week in our city. And we have affixed the city seal. And Dale, we'd like to have a few words from you.
First of all, Mayor Kirkandall, thank you very much, and Council. I'm proud to be with Yavapai Regional Medical Center. I work with Dr. Pierre Tibby, who is the clinical coordinator of our patient blood management program. I'm the non-clinical coordinator. But our goal is to provide best patient outcomes through the appropriate use of blood and avoiding the inappropriate use of blood transfusions. So Patient Blood Management Awareness Week, which this week is, and we appreciate so much you're honoring us with that proclamation, is a week dedicated to a nationwide effort to avoid the unnecessary use of blood transfusions so we achieve better patient outcomes and also provide less of a cost burden to the health care system. So we are honored and privileged to be a part of this. And Yavapai Regional Medical Center is one of the less than 200 hospitals in the country that's doing this. And so we're taking the lead here, and that's something to be proud of.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do. And I understand that Dr. Tibby is doing today?
He's doing, in the next few hours, yes.
Well, tell him you did his work today.
I will.
Good, thank you, job.
Next proclamation is very near and dear to my heart. It's about Alzheimer's Awareness Month. My father has Alzheimer's, and he's been in a nursing home for over a year. He has a life expectancy of another four to five years. And it is very heartbreaking to watch a loved one die of this disease. Is there anyone here from the Alzheimer's Association? Hi. You are Meg Benzie.
I'm Dan Scott.
Dan Scott. Nice to meet you. I'm going to read this, and then I'll give each of you a chance to say something you'd like. Whereas, Alzheimer's disease is a progressive, degenerative disease of the brain causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death for older adults. And whereas, according to the Department of Health and Human Services, Alzheimer's is the fifth leading cause of death of citizens 65 and older. Whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately 5 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's. And whereas, Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia. And whereas, according to the Alzheimer's Reading Room, 1,232 Americans are diagnosed daily, and 8,634 Americans are diagnosed weekly with Alzheimer's disease. And by the year 2050, over 13 million Americans could have this disease. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease costs the United States $100 billion per year in diagnosis, extended care, family caregiver illness, and lost wages, according to the National Institute on Aging. And whereas, neither Medicare nor most private health insurance covers the long-term services and support most people with dementia need. And whereas, the city of Prescott recognizes individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the education programs and support services provided by Arizona's Alzheimer's Association. Now therefore, I Marlon D. Kirkandall, Mayor of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2014 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in Prescott and commend its observance by all citizens.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Chief, and Mayor, Council, and City Manager for making this a priority. You know, it's an honor to stand up here and be part of this process. This is something that affects everybody. Just like some of the statistics that you've read in there, if you're not suffering from it or have that disease, you know somebody that does, or you're part of, the process that they all go through. So I'm excited for our department, the things that we're trying to accomplish. And it's one of those realities that, you know, we have to continue to get better at our job, and this is just another part of it. And it's a learning curve for everyone, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you Mayor, thank you Council, thank you very much. To add on to what Sergeant Scott just said, I'm really pleased with the collaboration and the support that the Prescott Police Department has given to families living with Alzheimer's and other dementias as well, with their new Alzheimer's Alert Initiative, where people can register their loved ones online so that when a first responder comes to their home, they'll have an understanding of the challenges that that family faces. So again, I thank you all for your support and helping us help other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you, Ben.
Is there anybody here for Small Business Saturday? Is there anybody here that owns a small business and wants to get a really cool proclamation? All right, I'll present it to myself. Dear Chris, Small Business Saturday, whereas the government of Prescott, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 23 million small businesses in the United States. They represent more than 99% of American employer firms, create more than 2/3 of net new jobs, and generate 46% of private gross domestic product. Whereas, small businesses employ over 55% of the working population in the United States. And whereas, 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local economy by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas, Prescott, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighbors. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I Marlon D. Kirkandall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, do hereby proclaim November 29, 2014, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on the Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. There you go, thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there someone here representing Good Samaritan? My daughter is right now in rehab at Good Samaritan, not the hospice, but you guys are good. This is National Home Health and Hospice Month. Whereas, Good Samaritan Society Legacy Home Care and Good Samaritan Society Hospice offer the highest quality and compassionate health care services to patients, family, caregivers, facing serious illness and life-limiting illnesses. And whereas, Good Samaritan Society Legacy Home Care and Good Samaritan Society Hospice Care providers take the time to ask what is important to those that are caring for and listening to what their patients and families say. Whereas, Good Samaritan Society Legacy Home Care and Good Samaritan Society Hospice believes in the essential dignity of every person, regardless of age, health, or social status, that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. Whereas, Good Samaritan Society Legacy Home Care and Good Samaritan Society Hospice are owned by the Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan Society, the largest not-for-profit provider for senior care and services in the United States. And whereas, the mission of the Good Samaritan Society is to share God's love and word and deed, providing shelter and supportive services to older persons and others in need, and believing that in Christ's love, everyone is someone, with a vision of creating an environment where people are loved, valued, and at peace. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Marlon Kirkandall, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the city of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 14 as National Home Care, Home Health, and Hospice Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness to home care rehabilitation and end-of-life care.
My name is Adam Bissel, I serve as a chaplain with Good Samaritan Society. On behalf of the Good Samaritan Society, I want to thank the Mayor and the Council and the city of Prescott for lifting up these important themes during the month of November, home care and hospice care. Yesterday, I had the privilege of meeting with a 95-year-old gal at the Pioneer Home. And as I shared with her, I said, "Isn't the world spinning faster and faster?" And she said, "Yeah, and we're lucky if we don't fall off." She's quite aware and alert, and it's just one of the privileges I have to meet with folks like that. And as we think about harkening back to those old days when things were slower, Good Samaritan Society has those faith-based values. We've been around for 92 years, and we continue to value meeting people where they're at. The old doctor with the black medical bag coming to your home, that's Good Samaritan. We take care of people where they are. So if you need home health care, we send a nurse to your home, we send physical therapists, occupational therapists, a social worker if needed. And we take care of you in your own home and get you as independent as possible. And then in terms of hospice care, hospice is one of those words most of us don't want to think about, but hospice brings quality of life. In fact, many people come onto hospice service and live longer than otherwise. Because with hospice, you have a doctor, a nurse, a social worker, a chaplain, CNAs, grief counselors. And this team around you brings you that sense that we're going to take care of you and your family. And so Good Samaritan Society's been providing hospice here in the area. And now we have the Marley House, I invite you to come tour that as an inpatient unit that helps people stay out of the hospital while they're on hospice. So they have a peaceful place and a place of respite when their family needs to relax. We'll watch over you and watch over your patients and your families. So trust Good Samaritan Society, it's a privilege for me to work with them. And we thank you again for having this November be our month of home care and hospice.
Thanks, Ray. Okay, let's move along, we have one presentation. Chamber of Commerce, tell us good news.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, good afternoon. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber. Next Wednesday, November 12, at 12:00 p.m., we're hosting the Women in Business Luncheon at the Hasiampa in the Marina Room. If you're interested in hearing from the CEO of Foothills Bank, please visit Prescott.org to register for the event. The 32nd Annual Christmas Parade is right around the corner. If you'd like to make a parade entry, please be sure to visit our website or stop by the Chamber by next Wednesday. Everyone is invited to attend our next mixer, hosted by Habitat for Humanity Restore. They are located at 1061 Commerce Drive. The mixer is November 20 at 5:00 p.m. On Monday, November 24, from 12 to 6:00 p.m., the Prescott Chamber will be collecting turkeys and donations for the Yavapai Food Bank. You can make your donation at the Frye's Store on Fair Street or Willow Creek Road, please. And again, this year, we are teaming up with American Express for Small Business Saturday, and that's November 29. The event encourages people to shop local. If you're interested in participating, please contact me at 445-2000-116. Also, please be sure to visit Prescott.org to make your nominations for the Prescott Healthy Business Awards. Time is running out, so visit Prescott.org to complete the application and recognize an outstanding business here in town. The Prescott Chamber continues to grow. Here's a list of our new members. Action Pages Phonebook. Arizona Cardiac Sleep Facility. La La's Styling Studio. Nuryum Skincare. Realty Consultants of Prescott. Rent Right Management Solutions. The Copper Whale. The Luxury Collection. The Point Cocktail Lounge. Whiskers Barberry. And finally, Yavapai Regional Transit. Thank you.
So you had a good month?
Yes, sir.
Good, congratulations. Okay, let's move along to the Consent Agenda. Is there any comments on the Consent Agenda? Council? Okay, do we have a motion to?
Mayor, just before I make a motion, Dana, would you read the Consent Agenda items for the audience, please?
Consent Agenda, item 1A, approval of minutes for the city council meeting held on October 28, 2014. Item 1B, approval of purchase of one each boom and pin assembly from Titan Machinery in a total amount of $14,713.51 to repair the transfer station crane solid waste fund.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda items 1A and 1B.
Second. Motion made and seconded, let's vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Okay. Okay, let's move along to the regular agenda, item A.
Item 2A, appointment of Ken Foot and Kevin Lane to the City of Prescott Municipal Property Corporation, MPC Board of Directors. Mayor and Council, the city of Prescott, Arizona Municipal Property Corporation is a nonprofit corporation incorporated under the laws of the state of Arizona on October 26, 1972. Currently, two vacancies exist on the Municipal Property Corporation Board. On October 16, the MPC Board held their annual meeting, at which time they discussed candidates to fill those vacancies. As a result of that discussion, the MPC Board voted to recommend Ken Foot and Kevin Lane for appointment to the board. Those recommendations were then forwarded to the members of the Council Appointment Committee, who reviewed the candidate information and approved of the recommendations of appointing Mr. Foot and Mr. Lane to the MPC Board. And I believe Mr. Foot and Mr. Lane are in the audience today. And at that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, they're both here, Jim, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, as Chair of the Council Commissions and Board Committee for recommendations to Council, they have very, very good applications. I want to thank you both for standing up, and you know your volunteerism doesn't go unrecognized. Thank you very much.
Will they need to go to HR and get on the payroll system?
Yeah, all our volunteers get paid a lot, you know.
They all get paid the same too, I think, if I remember right.
The gratification, though, of helping the citizens of Prescott is very good. Mayor, I would make the motion to appoint Ken Foot and Kevin Lane to the City of Prescott Municipal Corporation Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, before we vote, will they need to take an oath?
Yes, and if they step outside, the deputy city clerk will give them their oath.
Okay, so that's all set. Okay, motion made and seconded, let's vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Congratulations, thanks for coming to our aid. Great, okay, item B.
Item 2B, approval of purchase of asphaltic rubber crack sealant from Craftco Incorporated using State of Arizona contract number ADSP 013-035060 in an amount not to exceed $100,000, Streets Fund.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Crack sealing is an essential part of the city's pavement and preservation and rehabilitation program as it prevents deterioration of streets by blocking moisture that's conceived down through the pavement. The Street Maintenance Division personnel throughout the year identify streets that need crack sealant treatment. And it also is used in conjunction with the annual chip seal program to extend the life of pavement segments that are determined by engineering services. Crews work through the colder months to maximize the effectiveness of the process. And the Street Maintenance Division applied almost 236,000 pounds of crack sealant last year on city streets during FY14. There is funding of $100,000 in the current year budget for this purchase, and it's available in the Streets Fund. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments, Council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of asphaltic rubber crack sealant from Craftco Incorporated using State of Arizona contract number ADSP 013-035060 in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second. Does that take us through this fiscal year, or is this an ongoing?
Yes, Mayor, that should take us through this current fiscal year.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion?
You got it, you got a second.
Any comments from the public? Okay, let us vote.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, item C.
Item 2C, approval of 1, agreement with the Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership, and 2, fiscal year 15 annual membership payment in the amount of $40,000, City Contract Number 2015-069.
Good afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, pleasure to be here. This item seeks Council approval of the FY15 agreement with GPREP and requests the FY15 membership payment in the amount of $40,000 through City Contract Number 2015-069. GPREP is currently finalizing its organizational startup and has initiated its economic development activities in the past few months. Public and private sector groups have been meeting for more than two years to put this organization together. This year, the funding is proposed to be approximately 60% private, 40% public through its fundraising activities. Key milestones for the GPREP Board are fundraising is underway, the budget will be proposed at its November 17 Board Meeting, so it's coming up. Bylaws have been developed. An interim executive director has been hired. Protocol agreement has been developed and approved, which basically lays out how we're supposed to play nice together, how we cooperate with one another in the activities of the Board and the economic development activities. Ptrack, which is going to be the electronic system that's used to track, distribute, collect, prospect information, how it's shared with the communities, that has been approved as well. A website has been developed and will soon be live. The primary focus and benefit for Prescott is GPREP's marketing efforts. Its number-one job, as it is with most regional groups, is marketing efforts as a supplement to local marketing and business attraction budgets. Local marketing budgets and business attraction budgets, especially in rural areas, are often small. GPREP will conduct out-of-state marketing campaigns, organize direct sales missions to companies and corporate site-selection firms, and undertake regional market and competitor market analysis to help in that business attraction effort. These will also be key elements in Prescott's evaluation of GPREP's performance and how we measure the return on investment that we receive from the group and our involvement in it. The annual GPREP membership fee, as mentioned, is $40,000 and is included in the city's FY15 general fund budget. FY15 General Fund Budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Representatives from GPREP are here as well with us today. Thank you.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you, and Jeff, thanks for the presentation. You mentioned one of the key effects of GPREP is it assists us in our marketing efforts. What's the city's current budget for marketing, for economic development?
Broadly, somewhere between $18,000 and $20,000.
And what's GPREP's budget for this coming year?
The proposed marketing budget is $100,000 to $110,000.
And would it be fair and safe to say that recently, GPREP assisted us in locating a business that is relocating to Prescott, not quite ready to announce their name yet, but that they've signed their lease?
Yes, both of us did work on that project. Yes, sir.
And you mentioned return on investment and yearly review. From your experience, how long does it normally take to really evaluate the effectiveness of an organization like this for the city?
Well, Councilman, this is the fourth regional group I've been involved with, and I would say at a minimum, you're looking at two to three years to be able to accurately assess whether you're getting the return on investment that you want to see and hopefully will get.
And as our Economic Development Initiatives Director, you feel that GPREP is a good thing for Prescott to be a part of?
Yes, sir, I do, in large part because most of our competitors are involved in similar groups. The primary function, as I see it, for this group and others is, particularly in small markets, you really need a way to pool resources. No one has enough money to do it all themselves. This does provide a vehicle for us to be able to do that, and I think as long as you have the right structure, you're successful in the fundraising that you need, and you have the leadership to do this, it can be successful and can certainly be beneficial to the City of Prescott.
And my last question is, based on the structure that's been presented to us, are you satisfied with that structure as being a benefit to Prescott?
Yes, sir, I think so. There's still the proof in the pudding. That's going to be my job to make sure that those things do come together for the city, but the basics are there, and I think we need to keep in mind that from a practical standpoint, the real economic development activities have really only gotten underway in the last quarter, so...
Well, thank you, and thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. The $40,000, is that a fair indication of years 16 and 17 as to what our participation will be anticipated?
My guess, Councilman, that will be close. It's normally a number predicated approximately on population of the relative members, of which we are one of the proposed members.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Counsel?
Yeah, Mayor.
Chris?
Yeah, Jeff, I just wanted to say thank you for getting going on this. I mean, it's taken three years to get this train moving on the right track. You know, three years ago, we had one employee working half-time on economic development, and I think the conditions around here really, we're showing the effects of that. You know, I thought the wages were going down, the good jobs weren't coming so more, so glad to see that this is going. It's only been a few months, and we're already seeing success out of this effort, you know. We got you holding on the fort here at the city, and then we got GPREP with the bigger hook out there fishing for things, and, you know, when you talk to these location hunters, they speak their own language, and you just happen to be fluent in that, so is GPREP. You know, it's not something that comes easy, and you got to know how to attract these jobs, and these are the ones that count. These are the ones that you can raise a family on. These are light industry jobs that we're targeting after, and I'm so glad to see that we're moving forward with this. I think we're going to see nothing but success as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg?
Jeff, when is, once this is rolling, when, once they get their bylaws and everything done, are we going to get quarterly updates from them?
We can certainly, we could even do monthly updates for you, if you like. There is a requirement per the agreement that they do an annual report for us, but we can certainly do interim ones as well.
When I spoke to Steve, Steve Rutherford, he assured me that we'd get more than one a year.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Stu?
How are the Board of Directors selected, based upon this being a regional group?
Councilman Blair, basically, I think there was an initial group that, that the kind of ad hoc group went out and tried to recruit to get the startup going, to put some committees together, and then, as it grows, the Board membership is largely predicated outside of the public sector, based upon their willingness to participate in the fundraising effort as well.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Is that a thumbs up? We saved time there, didn't we? Jeff, you might mention the members of the public side, and my understanding now, on the private side, we're up somewhere near 25 contributors. Is that...
I don't know the exact number. I think it's somewhere between 20 and 25. The public sector members are Prescott Valley, of course, the City of Prescott, the county, Dewey-Humboldt, and Chino Valley, and all of them are basically billed the same way in terms of the population. Prescott Valley is essentially the same as us, and then it kind of goes down from there. I believe the county's participation this year is somewhere in the 25 to 27 range.
Yep. And the first annual meeting dinner event is going to be in January sometime.
January 23 at Centennial Center. Yes, sir.
And depending on who the governor is, we hope to have as our speaker.
We thank you for that effort, and yes, we hope that's the case.
Good. Okay, any other questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that there are representatives from GPREP, and just like to thank them for being here, and with that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, go take it.
Mayor, move to approve City Contract Number 2015-069 with GPREP for fiscal year 15 and 2: Authorized Payments to GPREP in the Amount of $40,000 for City Membership in Fiscal Year 2015.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, item D, when you're ready.
Thank you.
Item 2D: Approval of Amendment Number 1 to City Contract Number 2014-185 with Fan Contracting for the Park Avenue Improvements Project to Permit Blasting for Rock Removal.
Good afternoon, Henry.
Good afternoon, the Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Henry Hesch, Public Works. As you know, we started the project, reconstruction of Park Avenue, earlier this year. During design of this project, the city's technical specs were modified to preclude blasting as a method of rock removal. However, during construction and installing our utility lines, it was determined that they found a very hard rock called as blue granite. They have tried different methods, fan contractors, and we do appreciate that they worked really with us to find ways to do it without having to blast. We even asked our engineering staff to see if they can redesign to relocate the utilities, although it was an option perhaps for storm rain, but not necessarily for water and sewer lines. The regular hammering and drill bits, they're up to 8,000 pounds per square inch that they bring, but the rock needs a higher tensile strength for that, actually. Then they tried a different method called Dexpan, so when it's applied, it brings up to 10,000 PSI. However, this rock really requires about 12,750 PSI to be cracked and loosened. That is why we are here before you to ask for your permission to allow the contractor to do blasting. As I understand, the residents of the area are also in favor of blasting, and they have sent some others to your attention. We have Mr. Mike Fan here and the city staff, in case you have questions for them. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Charlie, before you ask, do we need Mike down front?
Not for my question, no. Henry, thank you for bringing this forward, number one. Number two, I appreciate the communication with the neighbors. I understand that your department put out door hangers. I also appreciate the neighbors that took the initiative to send the city manager essentially a petition in support of this. Unless there's somebody here that has a major objection, obviously, this is the right way to go, and I appreciate you and the contractor working together to find a solution to get this long-awaited project completed. So, thank you.
Stu?
Well, I appreciate the fact that you exhausted all the other methods. However, I believe blasting and its infancy years ago was a dangerous thing to do, but with the technology that's available nowadays and the charge amounts that you can put within those holes to create more of a busting effect than a blasting effect, I think it's an appropriate thing to do, and the sooner the better.
Okay, anyone else? Comments from the public? Okay, yes, sir.
Hey, I'm James Salt. I'm the gentleman who initiated the petition that you've all seen, and I'm up here today not to talk about the blasting, but to compliment the City Council on your city clerk. When I brought the petition down to City Hall, Dana accepted it for me, treated me with the greatest courtesy, and was very helpful. Hang on to her.
Jim, you know, when I read your petition, I wasn't sure, but you are an old blasting guy.
I'm sorry, Mayor, say that again, please.
It sounded like reading your petition that you knew more about it than we did, so...
Well, I can't...
You didn't cheat on us, did you?
The only blasting I've ever done has been from the bench.
That's very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Whoever comes in. Dan, come on down?
I can do it.
Yeah, okay, we'll take the thumbs up, yeah. Okay. Just one moment, we've got a gentleman coming down, then, okay. Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm Bruce Hardwick. I live on the corner of South Summit and Hill Street, and have a retaining wall around the corner of my lot, and it's quite old, two or three feet high, and I'm just wondering if it's been taken into consideration possible damage to structures like that that'll happen. Also, I have read the paper some, but does it appear that the construction's going to go all the way down Summit Avenue, or they're going to stop up there by Park Avenue? Don't know.
Well, we'll start with the second question, and then go to the attorney for an opinion on your first question. So, Henry, what is the limits of the project?
The limit is approximately one mile, and starting from, and I asked me to Tim to come, the limits, make sure I don't give the wrong information. Tim Shabell is our project manager.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. The project limits are from West Hurley Street on the north side to Canyon Springs on the south end. We're extending the storm drain on, in the area where the gentleman lives. The storm drain will extend down Glenwood Avenue, just around the corner where it turns into Summit, to an existing box structure that's there. That's the first area we encountered with the blue granite. It was approximately just about 40, 50 feet from the box structure we installed, and everything came to a halt at that point, but that's as far east as we're going on Glenwood and Summit is approximately, I would guess it's probably about 700 feet from east of Park Avenue.
Okay, do you have any concern on the wall that he's talking about?
No, sir, we'll have to do, obviously, a pre-blast survey. There'll be seismic devices set up to record the blasting activity. Like, as Councilman Blair mentioned, blasting's come a long way. It's not, it's not the activity that, you know, people get scared and they see rocks flying in the air. It'll be very muted. If you're not aware it's going on, you probably won't even notice it happens.
Okay, and John?
Mayor and Counsel, the amendment before you has some pretty extensive requirements, and you just heard some of those, about all of the preliminary work that needs to be done prior to the blasting. In addition, fan construction has a very solid insurance that covers blasting. It actually exceeds our requirement. Our requirement is $10 million aggregate. They actually have $12 million in coverage, which includes blasting. The city's named as a additional insured on that, and the insurance policy and the insurance company requirements are actually even more extensive than the city's, you know, ordinance. So, there's a lot of protections in place from a, you know, what has to happen before and during and after the blasting, and the insurance sort of rules are that if something is damaged as a result of blasting, it has to be replaced in its, you know, original form. So, there's, obviously, this is a lot more technical than being out sort of in the middle of nowhere because of the age of the homes. If, for instance, there's plaster, you don't just get to drywall over, it has to be, you know, replaster, and if there are old antique windows, those have to be replaced. So, based on our discussions with Public Works, we believe there's sufficient insurance, and given the nature and the techniques of blasting, we're pretty comfortable, and we ran it by the risk pool, too, that they're comfortable with the amount of insurance, type of insurance, the nature of the work, that if something were to occur, there's insurance in place to cover it.
Good. Does that give you the information? Very good. Gentlemen over here.
Mayor, while he's walking up, I have a question. Is there, with a structure that's that close to the actual blasting zone or segment, will it be videotaped just for background information? In other words, he's talking about a retaining wall. I think there should be videotaped documentation of the kind of shape that wall is in, so somewhere in the future, somebody can't make a claim that the wall was damaged. So, if that hasn't been considered, it might want to be considered.
Thank you, Tim, but that's a good idea, and we can certainly consider that.
And I could just add to it, part of the city's requirements that Fire Department and, there's a preliminary survey or a pre-blasting survey to determine sort of the pre-blasting condition of the properties. So, if there are, if, you know, if cracks exist already, they're, you know, they're already there, but if they get bigger, or if there are no cracks and things occur, we sort of have a pre- and then post-documentation, photographs and video as needed.
Okay.
You know, Henry, I'm guessing that maybe even that hammer bit that they use probably has more of a shaking of the ground effect than one quick blast, doesn't it? When you're hitting on that thing for days and days and days on end?
You're correct, Councilman, and that's what I've been hearing from our own staff, as well as the residents in the area.
Because you hit it once instead of 1,000 times.
Correct.
Okay. Still have a question over here.
Gentlemen, my name is Ray Winnick, and I live up on Park Avenue. Along with this blasting, I have seen years ago where they used a cover when they blasted to keep the debris minimum, and they used a canvas type, and I'm wondering if there isn't such a thing that they might use during this blasting operation.
Perhaps the best is Mr. Mike Fan's response to that, but as I understand, Mayor, the answer is yes, it is covered, and I'm told that if you're away 70, 80 feet, you wouldn't see or feel or hear anything, so...
Okay, well, we got a thumbs up. Yeah. Michael, come on down.
I'll answer your question. Mike Fan, 450 Wetstein, President of Fan Contracting. Correct, we do cover the blast to prevent any fly rock from occurring. Generally speaking, we like to put actually dirt over the top of the blast to not only cover any, cover any fly rock from happening, but to hold any percussion down, it helps the blast attack the rock better.
Okay.
And yes, we videotape both before and after pre-blast surveys and post-blast surveys.
And you're blasting to fracture, not to remove.
Absolutely.
Right. And it's not your first rodeo, right?
It's not our first rodeo.
Okay. Very good, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else question? Okay, do we have a motion to move forward on this?
Move to approve Amendment Number 1 to City Contract Number 02014-185 for the Park Avenue Improvements Project.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move into the discussion phase, and item A.
Item 3A: Public Workshop on the Current City Utilities Rate Studying Process.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This is a public workshop in relation to the utility rate study, which we started two years ago with the impact fee portion, but more specifically, we started this back on October 7. on October 7th when we had an initial presentation on the rates from Raf Telus and Rick Jardine, who's here again today. Then on the 14th, council adopted the public report, which is a 180-page document that was released that day to the public. We have had, the state law requires us to have one public hearing, which we are going to have on the 18th, but we've had additional meetings to get the word out to the public, including October 28th, we had a meeting where public attended. Today, again, Rick from Raf Telus is here to go over some of the, some of the information that was requested back on the October 7th meeting and also to discuss the questions and the answers that we've had, or the questions we've had from the public and to give some of the answers. We're also going to today take a look at some pictures from Public Works on some of the infrastructure challenges they're facing. And then, like I said, Rick will go over some specific changes from the 7th. The full presentation and the written response to question and answers will be available on the city's website later this week. And with that, I will, and we will have another public meeting this Thursday, November 6th. For anybody who hasn't been able to catch one of the presentations that we've had, we want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the November 18th is the actual scheduled public hearing on this item. With that, we'll turn it over to Joel Berryman from Public Works to go over some of the challenges.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark talked about the process that we've been through to date, but just to go a little bit back further in history, we started this project looking at impact fees. Impact fees are used to pay for growth or capacity that's needed in our utility infrastructure system. What we're here to talk about today and this process that we've been working through most recently is rates, utility rates. Utility rates are covered, cover the non-growth proportion of new projects as well as the operation and maintenance of existing infrastructure. So, I put together a few slides to show you some of the challenges we have in relation to the operation maintenance of the existing infrastructure. Just to start off, before we jump into some of the pictures, here's some of the topics I will be touching on today. Utilities that are in waterways and a couple of subbullets there. Age and condition, which is of utmost concern and really the driver for a lot of these rates. Improper construction, which can lead to the grit in the wastewater system and then some fats, oils, and greases. So, these aren't the proudest pictures that we show, but they are reality and that's what we're talking about here today. First picture I'm providing is susceptibility to flooding. We have a water main that happens to be a large diameter transmission main. It serves a good portion of the public. As you can tell from the picture, it is susceptible to flooding. City currently has a project in our budget. We work through design and we'll go out to construction to repair this, not to repair it, but to bury it deeper so it won't scour out in the future. I'm going to jump through these fairly quickly. If you have any questions, please stop me. Next picture, very similar, but on the wastewater side. We have a clay sewer line here that's running parallel to the channel here, but you can tell that, you know, the thread is pretty obvious.
How old is that sewer line?
This sewer line, I don't have a question, or excuse me, I don't have an answer off the top of my head. If I had to venture a guess, I would say 30 to 40 years old would be my guess.
Yeah, especially using the clay.
Yes.
So, if anything, thank you, Joel.
If I'm way off with my estimate there, I will get back in touch and provide that clarification. Next picture, very similar, more utilities in the waterway. This time, we have a manhole. I'll show one that's a little bit more severe in a future slide, but utilities in waterways, it was a practice of the past. It's something we try and get away from these days to the greatest extent possible. When we have utilities in waterways, the water tends to infiltrate or inflow into our pipes in our wastewater collection system when we have occurrences like this, where we have manhole lids that want to float up off of manhole frames and covers and obviously that's a threat to the public from just a trip and fall hazard, but also from the wastewater escaping the wastewater collection system, not to mention the regulatory infractions that this poses. This is not an isolated incident, unfortunately. You also note the date in the bottom right-hand corner, January of 2010. If any of you were around, and most of you were during those dates, that was a very extreme storm that we had during those times. Jump into inflow and infiltration. Once again, another picture from that January 2010 date. Just to give you an idea of magnitude, our treatment plant usually handles about 2.5 million gallons a day of flow. During this event, we handled up over 12 million gallons a day, so more than quadrupled due to the amount of stormwater that was getting into our system. That requires us to staff our treatment plant at least during this storm 24 hours a day, and we did it for over a week period. Next is a little less severe, but a problem that we encounter with roof drains being tied into our stormwater or wastewater, excuse me, roof drains being tied into our wastewater collection system, something that we frequently find out there in the field and is prohibited through the city code for obvious reasons. We spend a lot of time investigating these, finding these, and getting them removed from our wastewater collection system. Age and condition, age and condition, age and condition, that's really what this boils down to. Infrastructure is aging. It always is. Even the stuff we just recently put in, obviously, it only has a limited lifespan. And if you look at Prescott, what draws a lot of people to Prescott is our historic areas. Historic areas equal historic infrastructure. We can't get to it and replace it every year. We have to come up with a capital improvement program to address this aging infrastructure. And with aging infrastructure, we have increased maintenance, increased operation and maintenance costs, so on and so forth, which is a driver of our utility rates. These pictures here show the valves. There are two valves at the Watson Lake Dam. Both these valves are original to the dam and, as you can tell, they are not functioning properly. They are releasing water, but not quite where we want it to release water from. Public Works has a project in our five-year program, actually working on it right now to replace these valves, provide some freeze protection for these valves, the proper type of valve, vandalism protection, et cetera. A lot of the problems here are people dropping rocks on top of our valves from a great distance away. Next slide again is age and condition. You'll recognize the picture from the left. I showed that not too long ago on Pleasant Street. I'll focus on the picture on the right. That's a picture of our water production facility in the town of Chino Valley, what I consider our most critical piece of infrastructure that the city operates and maintains. That facility was initially constructed in 47, 1947, went through updates in 1955, 1978, late 90s, early 2000s. It's just continued to be scabbed onto as the years gone on. Most of you may not know that the city actually owns and operates electrical distribution lines out there. We are in the utility business and most of the time, we talk about water and wastewater, but we do have utility lines as well that we serve, or excuse me, that we maintain out there. Next picture, you know, although I have this under the age and condition, it could also fall under the improper construction. Obviously, a water pipe that's got a longitudinal crack down it. We find this most often when a pipe was bedded on a rock, improper bedding. It should be sitting on a material that is more supportive of the pipe than large diameter rock. Not only do we have pipe breaks that leads to water loss, it also causes major problems on our streets as well, as recently evident out in front of Murphy's. We had the water line incident that caused quite a bit of damage to that intersection. Jumping over to the wastewater system, this is a picture of a manhole. I've been here in front of this council to talk about hydrogen sulfide, not isolated to the city of Prescott. What hydrogen sulfide does, though, is it eats away the concrete and exposes the aggregate. As you can see from this picture, we have a lot of aggregate exposed. You lose the structural integrity of your manhole when this happens and the inherent dangers of having a manhole that doesn't have the structural capacity that it needs to have. City does annual projects, plural, to rehabilitate these manholes or wet wells, essentially coat them so that this sulfuric acid doesn't eat away at the coating.
Joel, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
We implemented, we implemented models, oh, probably, I want to say maybe eight years ago, nine years ago. Is some of this infrastructure part of the modeling process that we now have documented in our portfolio?
Yes and no. The model will not outline this as a project. The model doesn't necessarily look at condition. We do have age parameters in there that helps us guide our process, but the model won't specifically tell us, you know, condition of a manhole. What it will tell us is if we have certain pipes that don't meet fire flow requirements that need to be updated. To answer your question, not necessarily.
But you do have a maintenance management system, an asset management system, which does, you know, which is populated with the information like the mayor pro tem has described.
That is correct. We can look at history of breaks, age of infrastructure, those types of things to help lead the infrastructure improvement process.
Well, it would seem important to me that in a management strategy, as the manager was talking about, the more information that's populated into that management tool, which we implemented at a great expense of the taxpayer a number of years ago, that that information should lead to a better management strategy within the budgeting process to where we can prioritize.
I agree absolutely, and I can assure you that we use that management software to track 100% of our hours. It is being populated, it is being used.
Thank you.
Staying in the wastewater arena here, we're down inside a sewer pipe now. What we're looking at is a sewer pipe that has collapsed from approximately the 6 o'clock position to the 12 o'clock position. You can see a big chunk of this pipe and it appears to be clay, has, it is clay, has broken off and fallen into the flow line of the pipe. I think the picture pretty much paints the story, but to tack on a little bit, debris can get blocked. We can have backups, blockages in this pipe, not to mention that, you know, we have the potential for wastewater escaping the system. Like I said, not the proudest of pictures that we have to show you, but they are reality. Improper construction is the next theme that I'm going to hit on.
Did they use the wrong kind of rag to stuff in that joint there?
Yeah, we like to see cotton. It appears that they used some sort of microfiber. Someone has attempted to repair the sewer main with a piece of rubber and some band clamps, and then I guess that didn't do the trick, so they stuffed a rag in there and tried to fix it. Not the proper way to, this is labeled improper construction, but this is really an improper repair that we found out in the system. Next picture shows a sewer service line. We had a resident call, this is not too long ago, within the past year and a half or so, said, "I'm building a house on my lot and I think I found the sewer service, but it's egg-shaped, something's wrong here." And we said, "There's no way," but, you know, we went out and provided the customer service to determine that that is in fact their sewer service. And what happened is, you know, the contractor installed a piece of pipe that was not suitable for the application, so...
Got a question.
Fire away.
You know, we keep talking about improper construction. When we hire these jobs out, don't we send our inspectors to make sure they're using the right equipment, using the right materials?
We do. You know, a practice of the past, I can't comment on specifically, but today, yes, we do send inspectors out there. Unfortunately, they can't be on the job five days a week, eight hours a day. We've got a tremendous workload between our capital program as well as all the private developments that's going on. So, this is something we're trying to address, trying to get our hands on to make sure that what the developer pays for to put in is up to our standard and what the city and the taxpayers pay for is up to our standard. This happened to be a private development. I can't attest to the level of inspection.
Another question, now that you're showing us some video of some of the problems you're running into. Do we have some form of tracking with regards to who did that? Who pulled the permits?
We do. You know, this one off the top of the head, we know who it is just based on the development.
Is there, now I'll go back to legal, best, best, I don't want to use the word "yes" or "mr. attorney," but do we have the ability to go back on the contractor that did that?
Well, Mayor and Council, we, this is a, this is a development. So, if the developer is required to install the infrastructure and uses a contractor, we would do our inspections if it's deficient work. And again, depending on how old it is and how long it is after they install it to when we discover it, in theory, yeah, we could go back on the developer and say, "You installed this wrong," or "Your contractor installed it wrong," or "Used the wrong materials." Oftentimes, however, the developer no longer exists once you discover it, and so you're sort of...
While I understand that, okay, when they do still exist, there should be a remedy so that the taxpayers aren't always held accountable for bad work.
Well, there is. There is a remedy. It's a matter of finding it and finding the developer and then depending, again, how long between the original install and when you discover the faulty work, because oftentimes you don't discover it after it's installed, it may be years and years down the road. But when it comes to the city's contractors, we do have warranties for workmanship, latent and, you know, covered defects. So, we do, we can go after our contractors where the city is doing a public works project. We certainly have remedies there. It's a little bit harder when it comes to developer, but yes, we do have remedies, we can go after them. But like I said, it depends on how long, how old, whether the developer's still around. Those are some additional factors that we always take into consideration.
Thank you. You know, here again, when it comes time to award bids and contracts with behalf of the taxpayers' money, we need to know those things. And when it comes time to have to go pay for something because somebody didn't do their job right, we need to know whether or not to go after the developer that created the problem. I just don't see why we wouldn't be a little bit more proactive in watching out for the citizens and their money.
And I think in some of the public works projects, as you've seen in recent times of the last year or so, we have been much more aggressive in not necessarily just going with the lowest bidder if there have been problems with some of their past work, going to the second, I think Park Avenue is an example, going to actually the third bidder because the two lowest ones, we had prior problems with in some of the projects. So, we are getting much more aggressive, I guess, in that area over the last, say, year or so. And so, we are trying to make sure that we don't just go with the lowest bidder, we go with the lowest, most responsible.
Yeah, I would like to be able to see, you know, to be very candid. We sticking a sock in a hole in a sewer line kind of aggravates me. You know what I'm saying? Especially if it's under a public street, you know? So, it just kind of irritates me. We probably know who did that.
And at least you want to call up and tell them that they're full of debris.
Pressing on, we'll stay in the wastewater realm. This is a tap, a private tap that has been extended or pushed too far into the sewer main. As you can tell, it can cause blockages. Rags debris can get hung up on that. Along with improper construction, we get something grit called in the wastewater system. When pipes are laid too flat or they have bellies in them or low points, the sewage slows down. When it slows down, the grit settles out. This is removed from one segment of pipe. And this segment of pipe, this is actually an 18-inch pipeline. This is in the city of Prescott, capital improvement plan to replace this pipe, build it back at a proper slope so that we don't have this type of material accumulating in our wastewater system. Once again, blockages can be created when you have this type of issue. Hope everybody had their lunch. We're looking at a picture here of fats, oils, and greases. We refer to this as grease balls. We refer to this as grease balls. They accumulate in our wastewater system. We're lucky if they make it to manholes like this, we can remove them out. When they don't get to manholes, we get situations like this where they adhere to the sides of the sewer line or the manhole invert. It gets cold, they congeal. Obviously, once again, it restricts capacity of that, of that pipeline. And the next picture is very similar, but this one taken from inside the sewer main. You can see all the grease buildup that's accumulated on the side of the pipes. Once again, these are not our most proud pictures that we show you, but they are an example of some of the challenges we faced in the infrastructure. Any questions on that portion of the presentation before we let Rick get up here and talk about the rates?
Jim has a question.
Yeah. You know, Joel, you haven't been in here all that long, okay?
Correct.
And things were a lot different. I'm going to use the word "different" out of politeness, before McConnell went to public works. What I will say is that we know we have a certain amount of deficiency in our water, our sewer, our roads, the infrastructure that's necessary for the basic services for the people of Prescott. Is there a projection, or can you get the projection of what it would cost to fix what we know is broken as we live, breathe, and speak today?
I think that's a question that Mr. Hash has answered here, I believe in the last meeting, as we roll into this budget cycle.
The public has a right to know what's broken in town, and we have the responsibility to come up with a plan to fix it.
Agreed, and I'll let Mr. Hash expand a little further if you'd like.
Thank you, Joel. Councilman, the answer is we are hoping to get there. In fact, you brought this issue, which I certainly agree at the previous meeting. We don't necessarily have a good replacement repair program, and I agree with you, I think we owe it to you and the public. So my direction to our staff is since budget time is approaching soon, to get the best we can, a collection of information, what we have, what condition they are, how old they are, and we have picked at this point, randomly, a 50-year period for replacement. And we are going to bring all this information, the best we can collect for this year, to you for your review, your comments, and your direction. Once we bring it to you, we realize that perhaps the 50-year time period is a bit too aggressive, maybe too costly, but it's good. But we will be bringing this to you in the future for this budget year and future budget years.
Thank you. We're going into an election cycle probably next year with a general plan, and you know, it really bothers me, having been liaison on the general plan, that we haven't had the information that was necessary, really absolutely necessary, for the general plan subcommittee of the public, so that they could spend their two or three years, because that's what it takes to do, to bring a recommended plan, the plan for, for the next five years and 10 years, to the council for our, taking it to the public to vote on, because they're the ones that are going to vote on it, and there's more in a general plan to vote on than just things, you know, that are nonessential. That's the best I can describe it. So, thank you.
We agree with you.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, I can comment that several years ago, we defined a project, a long-term capital improvement program consisting of projects, and the known projects in utilities added up to several hundred millions of dollars. That's the scale. We're a town of 40,000 population, that's a staggering number. When you look at other infrastructure, when you look at street infrastructure, you had a presentation on pavement management, and in that presentation, numbers were 50 to $100 million for pavement management. That is keeping, you know, what we have in condition. What we are in the process of doing is that same maintenance management methodology to inventory our assets and to identify what our unfunded liabilities are with our facilities and so forth. We have not even developed that number. So it would not be surprising that at the end of the day, when you look in the long-term future, and as Mr. Hash has commented, and to respond to your question, as we go through different alternatives for placing our assets on a life cycle replacement program, it would not be surprising that that adds up to a half a billion dollars. And that's a huge number, but what it also represents, as we know and we've talked about year after year after year, that nothing was done for all these problems that we have seen and talked about, that the couplings were put on, the rags were stuffed in the joints, the fire hoses were connected up at the top of Copper Basin because there wasn't enough pressure up there in the summertime, and all those workarounds and makearounds and makeshift things were done for years and years and years. And one reason is because the utility rates were not there to support all of those needs. And, you know, Mr. Giardino went through that at great length in the previous presentation in October. But that is, that is always the situation with core infrastructure of municipalities. You pay now, you pay later, or if you don't pay at all, it breaks, and then you've got chaos.
Well, before we get to chaos, I want the public to know the truth. So let's tell them the truth and get on with it.
You know, Mayor, I had something to add on there, too. You know, it sounds like, yeah, we got to pay for past sins here for sure, catching up on a lot of these infrastructure things. Moving forward, though, when you talk about the grease balls and the contaminants that are heading in there that we don't want in there, are we working with like building department to make sure that when new businesses go in, they have better grease traps, or are we doing anything to prevent?
Well, yes, sir, and that is, there is a mandated, like federal law, pre-treatment program. And pre-treatment program, actually, the city, the city council adopted those initial phases, if you will, or steps towards the pre-treatment program, which require the traps to filter out this material, which require some kind of chemical pre-treatment if the wastewater from a particular facility will be, you know, deleterious to the wastewater system. That is, it will get to the wastewater treatment plant, for example, and cause it to malfunction. So yes, we do have a pre-treatment program. We are implementing it over, you know, a number of years, and it is for that specific circumstance that you described.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. My name is Rick Giardino. I'm the project director with Raftellus Financial Consulting and have been working with the city over the course of not just this utility rate study, but also the study that was referred to earlier, the development impact fee study. And I've had the pleasure of working with the city going back to the mid-'90s, so I do have quite a bit of history with you. I wanted today go through the presentation that we covered back in October, but what I want to do is focus really on where that presentation has changed, where we've added some information in response to some of the questions and requests that council had. And then towards the end, I want to spend most of the time, quite frankly, responding to some of the questions that the public has provided. So with that, and please, Council, as was said earlier, I'm going to move pretty quickly as well, so please interrupt me if you have questions. Quick review, and this goes a little bit to the discussion we just had about the age and condition of the system. What we're presenting here in the upper half of this slide, we have a line called annual increases. These are the proposed revenue increases for the water fund to begin to address some of the issues that Joel has talked about, to maintain the financial integrity of the fund, and to really provide revenues for those costs that are not covered by our development impact fees. So this really goes to the ongoing renewal and rehabilitation of the system. As Joel said, the capacity-related costs, the cost of capital to expand the system, the intent there is that our development impact fees would cover those costs. But as the pipes crumble, those kinds of projects need to be recovered from our user charges, and so we're showing here a series of 2% revenue increases on the water side to begin to fund those infrastructure needs, as well as the ongoing operation and maintenance, and then, as I said, maintain the financial integrity of the water fund as a standalone business enterprise. A similar slide for the wastewater fund. Now you can see that line of annual increases is much greater than the 2%. We're starting at 9%, then a couple of 5% increases in revenues. And these are again based on the identified capital improvement needs for the wastewater fund, and there will be more to come. I don't know if it was our October 7th meeting or with another municipality I was presenting to, but the comment was, "Well, Rick, after 2018, 2019, we're okay. We don't need rate increases, right?" And the answer is clearly, we will need rate increases. Given the capital nature of the water and wastewater funds, we will have rate increases well into the future. I can't think of a project where I've ever been retained to do a rate decrease study. We always do rate increase studies because our capital wears out. Joel referred to our infrastructure that's 40, 50, 60 years old. We always have this ongoing need. Couple that with enhanced regulatory requirements, the increased cost of operation and maintenance of the system from power to payroll and so on. Those kinds of needs will always be present in our system. Now, the increases may at some point get to a CPI increase, somewhere in that, in that nature. But the industry in general is in a catch-up mode through years of neglect, and the price tag is very, very significant. So that's just to set the stage of where we're at, and now I'd like to talk about the customer impact. And if you recall, we were proposing a couple different alternatives for the water rate structure. On the wastewater side, we're proposing no real change in the structure, and we can anticipate that customer bills will go up 9%, 5% the following year, and so on, for wastewater. But when you combine those bills, this is a similar slide to what we showed you back in October. Combining the water and wastewater bill, on the center part of the screen, we have water alternative number one. This was just really maintaining your existing water rate structure. And if you recall, water alternative number two was to look at modifying the structure to enhance our revenue stability, to give us a little greater percentage of our revenues in a fixed manner versus a variable manner. So what we've done here, and the real difference between this slide today and what we shared with you back in October, has to do with the non-residential customer profile and adding a customer profile there. But just to give you a little bit of context, at the top, we show a residential customer with a 5/8 inch meter with a monthly use of 5,000 gallons of water and a wastewater estimate of discharge of 5,000 gallons. This is about an average customer in the city of Prescott using about 5,000 gallons. Granted, we have some who use less, some who use a lot more, but this is about an average residential customer. You can see the bill today, the monthly bill today is about $76. If we don't make any change to the structure itself, but we just adjust the rates and the charges to reflect the additional revenue we need, that bill will go to $81 next year, and then on up to $87 by 2017. But if we look at alternative two and adjust the structure to enhance our revenue stability, instead of that bill being $88 in 2017, for our average customer, it will be a little higher, $88, $87.37 versus $87.97. The change to the structure really doesn't have much of an impact on a low-volume customer or an average customer. But a high-volume customer, which is the next residential profile we're showing, that uses 25,000 gallons, because of the change in the structure and moving more of our revenue recovery to a fixed approach or into the lower tiers, that customer would actually have a lower bill in 2017 than they have today. And we talked about how this is that trade-off between a goal of revenue stability versus a goal of conservation and water use efficiency. So it's clearly a different alternative, and it shows how these goals are in competition with one another. We then developed some profiles for non-residential customers, and you can see those listed here. Another thing that we did, Council, was to look at how we compare with our neighbors. So this first chart shows us for the average residential customer here in Prescott, how their monthly bill would compare to some of your neighbors, Chino Valley, Cottonwood, and Prescott Valley. And perhaps the biggest change from the slide we showed you back in October was for Cottonwood, as we received some more current information on how their rate structure is applied. I believe we showed Cottonwood is the most expensive back in October, and now they're towards the tail end. But what you can see here is whether it's your current water bill for this average customer, or the bill under alternative one or two, you're generally within the range of your neighbors. And the statement that I always feel compelled to make about surveys is it's great information, it's good to know where we stand with our neighbors, but customers don't make a decision about where they want to live based on their monthly water bill. They consider far many more important factors, such as their commute, the school system, and those kinds of things. And as long as our water bill is within a reasonable range of our neighbors, this is really a non-issue. And there's a lot of other factors that influence the water bill, and whether Prescott Valley is shown at the bottom here or Chino Valley at the top, a lot of things with regards to the age and condition of the system, some of the things that Joel was talking about, the community's philosophy on how they fund water and sewer systems. Some communities take dollars from the general fund and subsidize water utilities, or have maybe more or less reliance on development impact fees. So all these different variables will place a community on these scales. This next chart shows for a higher volume customer, one using 10,000 gallons, again, where they would compare on the scale. And so you can see while Prescott would be at the high end of this scale under alternatives one, at the higher end of the scale under alternatives one and two, the bills in total are not that far out of line with where you are today, where Chino Valley is, and so on. We've also added some additional slides looking at non-residential customers. This is one of the requests we had from Council. Show us some non-residential profiles and how we compare to others. So again, we're showing Prescott Current has a water bill for this particular customer of about $115 per month. That water bill under alternatives one and two would go to about $125, $130. And you can see in terms of the scale, you would move up a little bit when compared to some of your neighbors. Another non-residential customer using even a greater amount of water, 65,000 gallons, and where they would be on the scale, not as high as Cottonwood and Chino Valley, but higher than Flagstaff and Prescott Valley. A customer with a 4-inch meter, and you have relatively few of these accounts with the larger meter size, but using 450,000 gallons of water in a monthly period. And again, they're about in that same range compared to your neighbors as we showed on the prior slide. So no real outliers here. What I'd like to do next is to move to some of the questions submitted, and I think, as Mark mentioned, this PowerPoint presentation, as well as the written responses to the questions, will be posted on the city's website over the next few days and available to the public. So we had a number of questions that have been submitted, and I'm going to just provide some very brief responses. As I say, the detailed responses will be out there on the website over the next few days. We've employed what we call a cost-of-service process, and that process, dealing with question number one here, is really where we look at for a test year, fiscal year '15, '16, the next year that you have in your budget process. What are the costs of providing, and I'll just talk about water service, and how are those costs incurred? Why are they incurred relative to different demands on the system? There is clearly a different demand or a different cost associated with a demand that is level throughout the year. A different cost than a customer who might have high-peak demands. And that's generally represented by, if you think of a single-family residential customer who does irrigation in the summertime and no irrigation in the wintertime. So they have high-peak demands in the summer, and we have to size the system to meet those peak demands, and then that system sits idle the rest of the year. And this is not unique to Prescott. This is water systems across the country. But having those, having the system to meet those high-peak demands, that produces higher cost of serving and meeting those demands. And so those costs... And so those costs are identified through a cost-of-service study, and then they're allocated to those customers that place those higher demands on the system. If I use the same amount of water 24/7, 365 days a year, the cost to serve me is going to be different than, let's say, my neighbor that has these peak demands. And so a cost-of-service study goes through a process of identifying those costs, recognizing who's placing those kinds of demands on the system. And that's where we got to what we talked about in October about the customer class cost-of-service study, and how today we have some classes that are paying their cost of service or close to it, and others that aren't. And so we've recommended for Council consideration a transition period to get to customer class cost-of-service. We also had a question about rebates for economic development. And as a general rule, there are a number of goals and objectives that a community can have and try to accomplish through the water or wastewater rate structure. Goals, as I mentioned, having to do with revenue stability or conservation, those kinds of things. Economic impact, if you think about it, economic development, I should say, that is a goal that provides benefit to the community at large and may manifest itself in terms of enhanced property values or increases in sales tax. Revenue sources that go to the general fund, not to the water and wastewater utility. So economic development is generally not a goal that we try to address through the water and sewer rate structure, because if you did, what you would be doing is giving discount rates to customers that you want to draw here to produce other economic development goals. That generally fails what we call the cost-of-service test. There's not a real link there, because as the utility, we're not really receiving any benefit from that. So this really isn't a goal, and the short answer is we don't provide any rebates for economic development here in Prescott and utilities across the country. It's rare that you would find those kinds of things. There's also a question about why we charge single-family residential customers in a little different manner than multifamily, and it really has to do with the demands that they place on the system. A detached, single-family residential household will use more water per month than a multifamily dwelling unit. And maybe the single most important factor that influences that is the outdoor irrigation piece. A multifamily customer in an apartment unit, for example, has no irrigation. If there's irrigation for that complex, it's a separate meter and not a part of that dwelling unit. Whereas the detached, single-family, I have 3,000 square feet of Kentucky bluegrass that I'm watering. And so that's where we get that difference, and that's the driver behind the distinction of the single-family versus residential water tiers. There's also a question about, "Well, Rick, rather than looking at usage per dwelling unit, should you be looking at number of bedrooms?" And it's rare that rate structures would be based on a bedroom count for a number of reasons. Number one, there's not a great correlation between number of bedrooms and water use. There's a much better correlation if we knew the number of inhabitants in the dwelling unit. And two, trying to get that data and maintain a good quality data can be very difficult. Go back to my first comment, you really wouldn't want to spend the time to maintain the data if there's not a strong correlation to water use. So bedroom count is rarely used. I won't say it's never used, but it's rarely used when it comes to the design of water rates. The next six questions have to do with treated effluent, and so I'm going to try to take these maybe all together. The first one has to do with the recommendation that we should be charging our treated effluent customers a rate that's equal to 70% of the treated water rate. And there's a lot of reasons that we do that, and I'll go to the next slide, which lists the other, hit the wrong computer, better on this one. These next five questions, as well as that first one, all relate to treated effluent. And treated effluent is effectively, it's the wastewater that comes out of the back of the plant that we have two choices what to do with here in Prescott. We can either recharge it into the aquifer, or we can turn around and provide that to end-users, golf courses and an industrial user. And we provide that water to them in lieu of providing them water we've pumped out of the ground and put through our water treatment plant. And so it's one of the ways of managing our water resource portfolio. And what you typically see, number one, this is a lesser quality of water, and so sometimes customers aren't too crazy about taking it. And so we often provide them with a bit of incentive to take it and charge less than the treated water rate. And that's pretty common across the country. And this is more common in the West where we have limited supply, so you have more communities using treated effluent in a direct reuse like you have here for your golf courses. But the primary reason is that it is lesser quality. We want to provide somewhat of an incentive for customers to use it. And one of the questions had to do with, "Well, why not just charge the marginal cost?" Well, we don't charge the marginal cost of water to any of our customers. What we charge our customers is a blend of all of our sources. And so to isolate or earmark one customer and charge them just the marginal cost, I would view as somewhat inconsistent with our rate philosophy, inconsistent with industry practices.
I have a question.
Yes?
Since you're talking about treated effluent, and you're talking about recharging the same Answer for me, because I forgot, maybe, but I'd like to hear it again. When we recharge, X amount of water gets back into the aquifer. When somebody gets sold treated effluent, or they use potable water, a minute amount of water gets back in to the aquifer. Can you relate that suspect number to me again?
I think I understand your question, but I don't think I can relate. I don't think I can provide an answer. How much of that water returns to the aquifer? Is that effectively what you're asking?
Yes, yes. When we recharge it, there's a significant amount more that gets into the aquifer than when the water is allowed to naturally filter down into the aquifer, whether it's potable water or treated effluent. There's a huge difference, and that's why there's a rate difference between what you would charge for treated effluent, for example, for irrigation purposes, and you're trying to conserve on your potable water that's available to your folks. So that's information that I think's important for Council to have, to share that with you.
We can come back to you with that information. One of the other motivations for having treated effluent used by golf courses, as they are here in Prescott, is absent providing that water, we then have to provide them with treated water. And they're a customer that has the option of taking one or the other, but the vast majority of our other customers don't have that option. So if we can provide two large users, golf courses, with treated effluent, that frees up that treated water, our treated water supply, for other customers that don't have that option. So there's a lot of reasons why we would charge something less than the treated water rate. In some communities, in fact, the actual cost of providing treated effluent might be even greater than providing treated water because of the distribution system. And even in those communities, they charge a rate lower than the treated water rate to incentivize these customers to take that water and to balance their total water portfolio and their total cost of providing service in an efficient way. One of the other questions, question number six, had to do with how we're calculating this 70%. And what we're effectively doing is we're looking at the total cost of providing treated water service across all customers and quite simply just dividing that by the amount of water we're selling to arrive at an average unit cost. We're then taking 70% of that, and that's our $1,100 per acre foot. And we're proposing a plan where you wouldn't immediately go to that level. Just like, as I said earlier, we're proposing a multi-year plan of transitioning to get to cost-of-service, we're proposing a multi-year plan to get to the 70% of treated effluent. To get there overnight would produce a very, very dramatic increase in the treated water rate. And your two largest customers, their rates are effectively governed by the contract that they have. And so we're really talking about your smaller, much, much smaller use that's not under a contract. So that's sort of a very quick set of responses to the questions that have been received to date. You may receive, we may receive, more questions from Thursday night's meeting, and so we'll reserve the right to respond to those questions as they come in. But as we said, our written responses to all 10 of these questions will be out there on the website over the next few days. I now want to just really sort of summarize. And Joel has done a good job of this, and we talked extensively about how complex the city's water system is due to age, due to elevation, all of the nuances associated with your service area. And it just indicates or places greater pressure in terms of maintaining that system, renewing and rehabilitating that system. I've mentioned a couple of times that these are operated as enterprise funds. Water and wastewater funds, as we've looked at them, don't receive any support from the general fund, from general government. The user charges that are assessed, the development impact fees that are charged for new development in the community, those are the only two funding sources. And so when I talk about maintaining the financial integrity of these funds as business enterprises, we look at those two sources, we're making rate recommendations for Council consideration to maintain the integrity of these funds as if they're standalone operations. One does not subsidize the other. There aren't general fund contributions that come in the door to help keep down rates. And this is a fairly standard concept across the industry. That said, there are still instances out there where we do have subsidies from the general fund, or even utilities that to a certain extent subsidize the general fund. But I think we've been pretty diligent here in Prescott about maintaining these enterprise funds as we go forward. These increases, I think Council has sort of known that the increases were coming. In past studies, we've talked about these. We've talked about what we don't get from development impact fees. We really only have one other source, and that's user charges. And so the revenue increases that we're sharing with Council, I don't believe are totally surprising. Of course, the most significant one is right out of the gate, the 9% increase on wastewater to begin to address some of the problems that Joel was talking about. And what you're experiencing here is not unusual. As I work with utilities across the country, the underground facilities, it's the old out-of-sight, out-of-mind, as long as I turn my tap and I get my water and I flush the toilet and it goes away, things are good. But these facilities are wearing out just naturally, let alone some of the issues that Joel talked about, improper installation, poor materials. These assets have a definitive life, and they will require, they do require, replacement. The federal government will not be stepping in. Last week, I was in Washington, D.C. as part of an EPA committee I'm on, and this is a local problem, and the federal government is not going to, other than working with WIFA here in Arizona and providing some low-cost loans, the days of the 1970s and 80s of grant programs and so forth, those are not coming back. So it's going to remain a local challenge. We've talked extensively about the need for rates, and rates will be increasing over the next several years, probably much greater than CPI. Mark talked a little bit about where we go from here, Thursday of this week, public meeting number two, and then back to talk to Council again in the public hearing on November 18th. And with that, Mayor, if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
That's up there from the last question. I'll just sit and listen for a while.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to go back to slide number 39, question number two. I was the one who asked that question about why don't we use water wastewater rebates for economic development? We don't have a whole lot to work with for economic development incentives, but the Council does have control over water and wastewater rates. And from my perspective, defining something as an enterprise fund versus a general fund is something within the discretion of the Council. If we wanted to take from an enterprise fund and use it as a re-economic incentive and find another way to supplement that, or not, we could choose to do so. Do you agree with that?
Councilwoman, in general, I do not. I'm a CPA, I'm not a lawyer, so I won't practice law, but I've done enough litigation over rates to know that you do run the risk of being viewed as the rates we charge for water service then become nothing more than another form of taxation. And we're just using them to fund fire stations, police, and other things, or economic development that don't have a cost related to or benefit related to the provision of water and sewer service. So I think there's a little bit of thin ice that we'll find ourselves venturing on if we use the water and wastewater utilities as a cash cow to fund other general government incentives or programs.
But I do disagree with you in that I think there is a benefit. If we were to get a new industry to move into Prescott, they would be using water, paying for water, and I'm not suggesting they get a permanent rebate, but initial startup, three months or something like that. They would also be putting wastewater into our system, adding to our flow, adding to our recharge. So there's some benefit that does come back to the community.
I might take a step back and say that if you look on the front end of that benefit, what we have to do first as a community is build that infrastructure, and maybe even more importantly, in the case of Prescott and Arizona in general, is we have to go out and be sure we have adequate raw water and raw water rights in order to serve them. And those kinds of things typically take years of planning, and the old saying is very true for these utilities, build it and they will come. And so we, as a community, are out there taking the risk that they will come, because we have to acquire those rights, we have to expand our treatment plants, build the infrastructure, and hope the utility comes. And then all we're doing is recovering our cost. So I wouldn't characterize that as a benefit.
But we have to have the capacity in the first place before we connect that industry to our system. So we'll already know that upfront. It's...
Our existing rate payers would have paid for that capacity. And then through our development impact fees, we would be seeking reimbursement from that new development coming along.
Okay. I guess I look at it in terms of the whole organism, and you look at it in terms of a part of the organism.
That's a good characterization, yes, yes.
Chris?
Yes, sir. I'm just glad to see that we're still rewarding conservation. You know, I think that's going to help us in the long term more than anything else, you know, looking on water as precious, because it really is precious out there. So glad to see we're still doing that. One thing, when you were comparing the rates of the different communities, I know it's good to see the different dollar amounts, but that really doesn't take in. When you talk about Prescott Valley, most of their infrastructure has gone in since '92. You know, they're looking at 25-year-old infrastructure. You know, some of ours might have been in since 1892. So, you know, we're talking 120 years, and they pretty much have a flat plain and their wastewater treatment plants downhill. You know, we spend our whole days lifting waste, lowering waste, lifting water, reducing water. Just the terrain challenges that Prescott faces are tremendous. So, you know, when you just look at straight dollars, it's like, you know, why does a Cadillac cost more than a base Honda? Well, you know, there's differences out there, and you got to look at those.
I have one of those iffy questions, I think. We don't have a perfect stormwater system. And during the rainy season, a lot of our stormwater ends up in our wastewater system, which in the long haul produces more effluent and might change the percentage of what normal effluent from only wastewater would generate, which allows us to sell more effluent that might have started this wastewater rather than, or might have started this stormwater rather than wastewater. rather than wastewater. Does that change our, our 70%?
Well, Mayor, I think the important point about that is there are federal requirements and state requirements about having, having infiltration of the type that we have. And so I think as Joel pointed out, when you saw the picture of the truck on top of the manhole, and you had those little fountains out of the manhole, I think Joel mentioned that those are the kind of pictures you don't want to show around ADQ or EPA, because we'll end up getting fined. And so, you know, it's, basically what's going on here is that we're not really in compliance. We have an issue, which is an environmental and a pollution issue, and, and so we need to fix that issue, in which case I think probably, you know, your premise becomes moot, frankly.
Yeah, well, on more than one occasion, at Aspen Creek, at the top of the hill, I've saw that manhole cover blown off several times in heavy rains. And we load up our wastewater system, starting at the top end, but that at the bottom end does develop more effluent because of the sheer volume that's saleable than if we had not allowed that stormwater to penetrate the system.
Yeah. Well, just a couple more comments. Number one, winter storms are not going, are not going to do much for us in terms of direct use. The golf courses are closed, construction contractors are not building the roads and so forth. The other thing is that, in fact, if you do look at our recharge records, that's where it goes. You know, we run more through the plant, there's always a question of, of the quality of what's coming out of the plant, because the process is not running the way it's been designed to run. And so we're just running, we're just running this huge slug of water through wastewater treatment plants, got no place to go except the recharge ponds. And yes, in the past, we have benefited from that, but let me just say again, from a compliance standpoint, that is an unhealthy situation.
You again.
Yeah, Mayor, sorry, I just wanted to add something in there. You know, there's a great way to avoid all these rates and rate increases, and that's not to use the water itself. You know, we just hired a new water resources person, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sitting in the audience here, but, you know, I'm building a new house myself, and I called Councilman Blair, he's got a big old rain, rainwater catchment system on his house, and he says that he doesn't have to use any water for his vegetation, except for one month out of the year, you know, so I've been milking information like a cow. And I think when we, when we talk, when we talk about incentives, I think incentives can be in the form of education too, because, you know, you're not paying for any of that water, you're just catching it and running it off. So having a water resource person here to get that information out, I mean, that's a great way, if you want to dodge the rates, catch the water off your roof, or find a new way to use your gray water, there's all kinds of ways to save it.
But at the same time, that, that lessens the amount of water we sell, which lessens the amount of money we take in. But you still have fixed cost of running a system. And, and I think we've seen that as a result of conservation, that our, our revenue sources have gone down, but our costs have remained constant or even grown, because the system is still wearing out. So it, it's kind of a double-edged sword, when you depend totally on revenue from this enterprise fund to take care of all the bills. So you could conserve yourself out of business at some point in time, if you didn't have some growth. And, and I think as we look at our growth potential, which, you know, historically has been 2%, and maybe it's going to become 1%, but you still have to have some growth in order to stay even.
I just feel like you can save water and still, I mean, let's charge more.
Mayor, the other side of conservation is that if we conserve more, we're pulling less water out of the ground. And maybe we don't need to pump water out of the Big Chino, or spend a lot more money acquiring new water sources. Maybe we'll have more room for growth. So I think we ought to take that into account as a benefit of conservation. I know there's that downside, but it's, it's, it's an intricate balance.
I think it's important, from my standpoint, to look at the backside of this, and the backside meaning that if ours codes are such that in the state now that we can use gray water, it's legal to do, because the phosphorus has now been taken out of the soaps, to where houses are plumbed for sink water and disposal water out of your, out of your dishwasher and your shower water, is separated to a cistern system in your yard, where that water then is used for your watering of vegetation on the outside, you're going to be treating a whole heck lot, you know, lot less water that's going into the sewer system, out to the sewer plant. So I'm looking at it from a different side. You're talking about pulling more out, and I'm talking about not putting more back in, especially when there's a benefit, number one, to saving money, to conservation, and the cost of treating the sewage. So I believe if we were more aggressive with taking the gray water and new construction and making it a positive with economics of the house, to put in, you know, separate systems, so you could use the gray water for your outside watering, would be a benefit all the way around.
Steve, I, I think we all agree with that, but if you'll remember at, at Sundog in the last several years, that we have not had enough liquids flowing through the system to move the solids, that it's created another problem at our treatment plant. So there is a balance there, and, and it's why we hire people like, like Joel over here. But today, we're, we're trying to determine what the rate structure is going to be, and I think all those other things will fall in line as we, as we do that. Any more questions here? Comments from the public? And what we're going to do, Howard, how are you? Is we're going to take comments, and staff will make notes, and then we'll, we'll develop those answers and get back, back to the public.
I don't know if we forgot Jim, he wanted to go last. I suppose he's going to go after the public then. Mr. Mayor and Council, Howard Mechanic, I live on Bloom Place in Prescott. I just wanted to comment about a couple things that were brought up here, and then make a, a brief statement and question regarding the treated effluent and the sales of treated effluent. This is the first time that there's been a public discussion about this issue in 18 years, as far as a review of the whole structure of this rate. And what the study shows is that the city is charging a fraction of what the consultant determined is a reasonable rate at this time. Approximately, we're charging approximately one-third for our two largest users compared to what he thinks is a reasonable rate. Now, I think the reasonable rate is a little higher, and let me tell you why. I think in Prescott, not in some communities, but we're talking about Prescott here, you take that treated effluent and you recharge it into the ground, and magically, under state law, you get 95% of that back as potable water, as a right to pump, 95% of that quality, quantity as potable water. It turns into potable water, under state law. All you have to do is pump it right here near the airport. Based on that, we should value that effluent close to the value of potable water. 90% I think is a reasonable figure. Now, Rick mentioned the fact that we should encourage users, and he's talking about the two largest users, which are golf courses. They use approximately 90% of the effluent that we're selling. Now, under this study, and what you were told, is that's off the table. Those 90% is off the table here, and we're told that because there are contracted rates. Well, first of all, there is no contracted rate with the largest user, which is Antelope Hills Golf Course. This council has never approved a contract that guaranteed a, a long-term rate for Antelope Now, Rick mentioned, and I put this in my, in my question, my written question, based on what Mr. Woodfield said, and I, and I just want to verify this with Mark, can golf courses use potable water legally in the city of Prescott?
No, I don't believe they're allowed to by code.
Okay. Now, Rick was talking about we need to encourage the golf courses to use that, otherwise they'll use potable water. And, and that's not the case here, and I pointed that out. They cannot use potable water. We do not need to use the pricing of effluent to encourage the use of effluent. The point I want to make is regarding the 90% that's off the table, let's start with the largest user, Antelope Hills. They use close to two-thirds of the effluent that we're selling. Now, Gene asked a question about providing incentives through our water fund. That's what we're doing here to Antelope Hills. If that's what you want to do, a year ago, you said you wanted to get rid of these subsidies to Antelope Hills, because out of the general fund, we were spending money to support Antelope Hills. Is it a better idea to subsidize their water? Discouraging conservation? That's what you do when you subsidize water, you're discouraging conservation. You're also misallocating a valuable resource when you underprice it to one user. There may be a higher and better use of that product. If that user is paying a fair, a fair price, then maybe another user won't be able to use it. But if they're paying a, a price that's one-third the computed price, does that allocate your resource in a responsible manner? No. We do not want to encourage any kind of economic development, golf courses, tourism through water subsidies. We do not want to subsidize any water use in the city of Prescott. Please do not subsidize water. If you want to subsidize something, we discussed that before, Mayor, as you remember. If you want to give a subsidy to a golf course, that's your right, but please don't subsidize their water. They do not have a contract, despite what's been told here. I'm asking the council to review this situation. Not necessarily, I don't want to hold up this, this consideration of these rates. It's been 18 years since we looked at effluent rates. I don't want to wait another 18 years to look at the rates for Antelope Hills. I think the, the Water Issues Committee would be a good venue to look at this. And also look at the second user, second largest user, Prescott Lakes Golf Course. What's the situation there? Yes, there's a contract. And this, there was a little misunderstanding on this also, based on what was said last month, and based on what was said at the, the public meeting, and I was told I would get answers here today, so we could deal with this issue here today. Now we're told we're going to have to deal with it in a few days and get these answers to some questions, and by the time you're going to hear, hear about it, it's going to be your voting session. But let's get back to that one point. There's a contract that was issued, and, and I'm not blaming the city in 18 years ago, issuing a contract at a low price for effluent. That was before we were in an active management area, all right? We were declared out of safe yield 15 years ago. This contract was from 18 years ago. Then effluent was something you just want to get rid of. It had no value. Now it has almost the value of potable water, back then it didn't. So we need to look at that contract and see, is there a way that the city could get something closer to a reasonable price? They're, they're at one-third of what the consultant said is a reasonable price. In that contract is wording saying the city can increase the price to Prescott Lakes based on the increased costs of treating effluent to reach existing or future standards for Class A effluent. My question, and that's on top of the inflation clause in there. There's an inflation clause that says they can get, the, the contract can go up 2% to 6% per year based on inflation. And then it says after that, notwithstanding that clause about inflation, there's a statement that says, based on increased cost of treating that, of effluent, you can increase the cost to Prescott Lakes. Has there been an increase since 1996 to the city of Prescott for treating the average gallon of effluent? I would submit there's been a big increase since 1996. The city has never asked Prescott Lakes to cover their fair share of that increase in the cost of treating effluent to, to current or future Grade A standards. And, and, and I got a response from the staff saying, we were not forced to do anything here to, to spend 40, $45 million on this new sewage treatment plant. We were not forced by regulators. That's not what the contract says with Prescott Lakes, that they can only be charged if we're forced to do something. We have been told for years that that plant was being built so we can continue to maintain standards of effluent based on state and federal law. We've been told that, not all the cost, but at least some of that cost is to maintain our standards. So all I'm asking, we need to review in a public, public way, not 18 years from now, we need to review those two large users and see what is a fair deal. Now, you were told, and at the, at the workshop and also at the meeting, you were told that the contract is up with Prescott Lakes, and there's going to be a negotiation in about a year. They had a 60-year contract. 20 years, and then two 20-year automatic extensions at their option. There's a negotiation coming up in a year? So we need to discuss this and see what is, what are our options? And, and that's all I'm asking for, is, is this issue not being kept under the rug for 18 more years? I've asked the effluent issue to be discussed over many years, and it's finally here, and I appreciate the city's addressing this for 10% of its sales. We need to address the 90% and not keep it under the rug. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Howard, and this is another iffy. If Antelope Hills was not there, and Prescott Lakes Golf Course was not there, that amount of water would then be pumped back in the ground? Is this, is this your, so we could sell more potable water?
Yeah.
And we could grow faster?
Of cour-, yeah, that's right. At the, at the meeting last month, when the presentation was made, Gene was indicating that she had a concern about new growth needing water in the city of Prescott, and us not having enough water for new growth potential. And that's true. Even if we get the Big Chino project water, we're still going to be short for the projected annexation areas. So for your, for people to say, well, if they don't, if these golf courses don't buy the water, what are we going to do? What we're going to do is put it in the ground, and there's two things you can do with that. One, you can provide a community in Prescott between 6,000 and 8,000 people with the water that's going to the two golf courses. I'm not saying shut off the golf courses, but I'm responding to your question. That's how much water we're talking about. You can build a community of 6,000 to 8,000 people, including all the related commercial, non-residential uses for that community, with that amount of water. We're talking about 1,000 acre feet of water. So we have a... So we have a valuable use for that water if they don't want to use it. And to respond to the point about conservation very quickly, and I agree with Chris, if we don't have a problem conserving too much anymore. We've expanded the sewage treatment plant. We don't have to worry about concentrations. And people are not going to conserve so much that we're going to run into a problem like that again. I hope the engineers looked at it, and that's what we were assured. That issue's off the table. So the question is, can we have too much conservation now? No. We can't have too much conservation. If there's a lot of conservation, like you said, the revenues will go down, but like Chris says, then the rates go up per gallon. It's not an issue of too much conservation, and I disagree with what Rick says too, that we have to have a balancing act between conservation and stability. We need long-term stability, not stability in one year. So if people conserve over a long period of time, we adjust our rates, and we keep our fund stable, we will stay stable in this fund. That is not a consideration whatsoever. We need to conserve conservation. We don't want to back off on that issue. I really hope, because I've heard a lot of council people talk about this, that we've run into problems with conservation. It's costing us money. And I think we're over that issue. I hope we're over that issue unless staff says we're not. I think we're over that issue. We need to continue to conserve. And people are not going to cut out two-thirds of their water use. That's not going to happen. They maybe conserve 10% to 25% more or something like that. So I just don't think it's an issue anymore, Mr. Mayor. I really don't. And I hope we don't send mixed messages out to the public. We're going to give you incentives to conserve, and we still have good incentive programs. And we have a good tiered water rate structure to encourage them to conserve. But then we're hearing messages on the side saying, well, don't conserve too much. You see what I'm saying? That's a mixed message, and we need to stop that message about, don't conserve too much. I would really appreciate it if people who've been saying that sort of back off on that type of message.
Did you get all led down?
I'll be available Thursday at 6:00 PM to address these issues and hopefully we can get these things straight. Because, you know, some of the things I've said were opinions, but some are facts. And we need to at least get the facts straight here. And I'd like to have the discussion, if possible, on the 90%.
It will be done.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for your input. Someone else? Charlie, you're back.
Mayor, thank you. I just had one comment, and I'm sorry I had to step out for a moment there. I came to the public workshop, or public hearing, or public meeting, whatever you want to call it, the other day. And I applaud staff for their presentation. I thank the representatives from Seawag and Howard for being there. There were two other people from the community who showed up, two. And that was it for a rate increase that impacts every single household in town. So I encourage people, if they have a concern, take advantage of these opportunities to come and speak and learn more before we have to make our decision. Thank you.
I thought we was going to get the thumbs up.
Well, based on that last comment, my name's Daniel Matson. I've looked over this study in considerable detail along with you other guys. I come to this meeting, so I don't bother going to those. I think the rate increases are reasonable. I actually find myself having to say that Howard's got a point about the effluent customers having to use the effluent, so why incentivize them to buy effluent? If we can get more for it, why not? And I think we need to move forward with this because basically the amount of the increase isn't that great, but what it's going to do for the city in the long run is pretty important. So count me in. Thumbs up.
Thank you. Okay. Item B.
Item 3B, discussion of billing credits for water leaks on the customer side of meters.
While we're talking about water, Mayor and Council, we thought we'd bring this item forward. Like the city, a lot of our customers are dealing with aging infrastructure. When the water flows through the meter at the property, it's the customers. We don't know what they do with it. We don't know where it goes. A lot of them are dealing with older systems just like us. They're conservation-oriented overall, but they'll have a leak or they'll have a failure in their system, which causes a significant water bill with our water rates as tiered as they are. In the past, since we've adopted these rates, we've had a loose policy, or a city manager policy, or overall policy to help those customers who have those one-time bills because of a broken toilet, or because of a broken yard line, or an irrigation line. And I had a few examples in our report. The council report where an individual had a problem with a fixture in their home, ended up using 108,000 gallons of water in a month. Their regular bill went from 100 bucks a month to 1,700 in one month. Again, they're faced with something they have to fix, and then this huge bill comes as well. The policy that currently exists is if it's a large bill like that, we will split the water cost, the cost of the water with them, and they will pay half of it. In that case, the customer still paid almost $900 for water, but it wasn't the full 1,700. Another example that was in the report was an irrigation line, which happens a lot in the spring when the irrigation systems come back on. Something froze, something broke. They don't know it's underneath the ground. This person used 551,000 in one month, had a bill come in the mail for $11,162 on a meter that usually has a $38 bill. Again, the customers are already dealing with fixing the problem. The current policy is not as structured as we'd like. That's why we are bringing it forward for council consideration. Overall, the usual loss that we see is around 50,000 to 60,000 gallons on these items. It's a $700, $800 bill that these customers get when their bill is usually 90 bucks a month. Again, the thought is to provide them some relief so that we're able to help them. Because obviously with these large bills, you know, if we can't help them do something, you know who they're going to call? You guys. The policy that we're bringing forward for council discussion, consideration, is the large water use is related to a leak, that the water use in a month has to be twice their normal average to even be considered. The leak must be prepared prior to them submitting a request for a credit. And they must file the request within 90 days of the incident. They can't wait years or whatever. And the customer is only entitled to one credit every four years or 48 months. Currently, we only allow once ever. And that worked fine the first four or five years. But we have customers who move every two years because they're renters, and they use it multiple times, whereas we have people that have been in the same house for 50 years. Puts them definitely at disadvantage because they are dealing with the older infrastructure. But again, you know, we're not, we acknowledge that the problem is their lack of maintenance on their system, but you know, to give them some sort of a ability to make those things without having these large bills and being faced with that further financial burden. And then there's also, a lot of times it'll lapse a month. We'll get the large bill. We'll call them because they have a water leak, or we'll send a letter. You have a water leak to get them noticed, but it will sometimes cover two periods. So the adjustments are over one or two periods. With that, I'd be glad to answer more detailed question, and the lady who deals with us on a daily basis needs more from our utilities.
Every light is lit up, so I think you have some. Charlie, start with you.
All right, Mayor, thank you. And Mark, thanks for bringing this forward. Everybody's probably going to say this, we've had citizens come to us with this issue. At one point in time, I had an issue in Tucson and had to go through this because we had a leak. Another example was a backflow preventer that froze out in Chino one night. Started as a slow leak, and by the end of the day, it was 10,000 gallons, and you were soaked trying to get to it. It was a mess. My concern is twofold. Number one, I don't want a system that can be easily abused. And it seems like with what you've outlined, it would make it difficult for somebody to abuse that system. Number two, what I'm concerned about are internal, and the way it's referenced here, is improper operation of a device. And so what that leads me to think is, well, somebody who has a running toilet because they've got a leaky valve. You know, that's something you hear. That's something that you should be able to respond to and fix. I would have a problem with saying, oh, you accidentally, you know, had a $3,000 bill because your toilet's been leaking, and you did nothing to repair it in 90 days. And you can hear it run. I mean, it's clear there's an issue. And so I would be concerned about what that specifically means, improper operation of a device. The other aspect to it would be, we don't require people to check their houses for leaks. We do check backflow preventers and require them to submit something every year. Is that correct? I'm getting the nod from utilities. I know that we've been talking with Seawag about conservation, so I think there might be an educational component to show people how to check for leaks in their house to avoid these types of issues, especially the ones that are long and drawn out. Like I said, I'm just concerned about abuse and getting some definition to what improper operation of a device is. Councilman Blair brought up a good point. You know, obviously, if you're deaf, you can't hear your toilet running. But you get where I'm coming from, hopefully.
Yes, I understand, Councilman, and that's why we're trying to get a more structured policy to keep, you know, to limit abuses. You're always, of course, going to have abuses. And, you know, obviously, certain types of problems with toilets, you do hear. But sometimes they are so subtle that they aren't heard. You know, so there are things that fail that you don't hear until you get the bill, and then you start going around and looking.
Steve?
I appreciate the policy. I think it's good that we're doing that. And I just want to share one item that most people would not be aware of. And a lot of irrigation people out there have irrigation timers that are battery-operated. And I just want to make sure that people understand that when those batteries aren't changed out annually, sometimes they get weak. And what that creates as an issue is it will turn the timer on, but it won't have enough power to turn the timer off. So therefore, it can cycle through and run for three or four days, dripping two gallons an hour. And before it saturates your driveway or anyplace else where it comes up and you can actually see it, you've run a lot of water through the system. So it does happen, especially in that case of an irrigation timer on a battery. And I think it's important that we do educate. I would agree with Charlie. Those things need to be put out there in a form where here's some things you can look for if your water meter's running.
Good point.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back to potable water. I don't think we have in place a mechanism to deliver effluent to the general public for irrigation or anything else that they decide to use the water they buy for. Am I correct on that comment?
Correct. There are meters where construction users can get it to do dust suppression, but generally, you're correct. The only delivery is to the golf courses.
Is that meter that we make available to construction people also available to the general public that would choose the water with effluent at a different price rate? That would be a question. And then here again, knowing full well that the water that's delivered, that's treated for arsenic, that's treated for various other chemicals, that complies with the ADEQ standards, to the general public, the general household, is drinkable. I don't know if there's a mechanism where 95% of that water comes back if you're putting it through the recharge facilities. I don't know why we would choose to subsidize any problems that somebody would choose for irrigation lines, et cetera. They made the choice to water their plants. They made the choice to have irrigation lines. They made the choice to keep them there. And whether they're on a meter, or they're on a timing switch, or whatever the case is, why is it the responsibility of the taxpayers as a whole, or the ratepayers as a whole, to subsidize the failure of a private system that made that choice? Just my question. I have some of the same concerns that Charlie has. That seems a little bit abusive to me.
Chris?
Yeah, Mark, I'm more on the customer service end of this thing, looking at this problem. And I was wondering, with all the money that we spend on our computer things, and you'll know this because you work on them every day, is there a way that if someone's usage doubles, can it flag it in our computer system and receive a courtesy call from the city that says, you know what, we noticed your usage has gone up? Now, maybe they install an irrigation, but so what? They get a call? At least we know we're looking at their bill and we're caring for them that way. Is there a way to flag it and get the courtesy call?
We do get a flag, and we do calls, and we do the leak letters, what outlines how they can find the leak, different tests they can do. We get approximately 400 out-of-the-norm reads every day that we do the reads. So about 800 a week that I hand go through, look at their usage, compare it to last year, call the customer. Sometimes customers are kind enough to call us ahead of time, tell us they're going to fill a pool, that kind of thing, so we don't do it for them. But everyone else does get flagged and a courtesy phone call.
800 a month? Wow.
No, 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 a week.
That's out of the norm.
800 a week? A week? Okay, never mind that first one. You know, my feeling is just that, you know, by the time the bill usually reflects it, you're in the month two of the break. And, you know, I'm thinking about, a lot of our population is on a fixed income, and some of these things can really smack you, you know? Like when you're only bringing in 1,000 bucks a month, that $1,700 bill kind of sets you back a little bit. Is there a way that we could cap the liability for a homeowner on a one-time basis at like 1,000 bucks or something like that?
Again, it's a council policy, you know, we can come forward with whatever council wants. We put this together to try to minimize abuse and to limit the, you know, the overall cost of the policy. But if council wants to limit it...
Just thinking of putting something that's obtainable. And then, this would be good for you, Mark. Suppose someone gets that $1,700 bill, and, or whatever, their liability is something outrageous like that, like 1,700 bucks. The water went through their lines. They're liable for it. Do we have any mechanism that lets them pay for that over time?
Yes, we have, we do set them up on promised pays or payments over time. Give them, I'll let Denise answer the specific time, but we do do that on a regular basis.
We try to keep it to 12 months, but in some cases, we will split it over 18 months. We try to keep it no longer than 18 months.
Sounds like you're really adding that personal, human touch to it, which is nice to hear.
You know, we really do try, and something you were concerned before too. A lot of the times, these are elderly people, but also it's spare bedrooms, spare bathrooms that aren't used on a regular basis that cause that. That's why it goes unnoticed because they don't hear it because they're not using it all the time. They've had company, and they left, went back out of town, and now they have this huge leak.
Well, it's amazing how much a fast drip will actually add up to over 30 days. Do we have a list of contractors that we have for referral? You know, to some people working on plumbing, they might as well be trying to work on a Ferrari. You know, it just perplexes them. I make everything leak, so I farm it out. But do we have a list, and do they have any kind of rate set up where Mrs. Smith doesn't get charged $500 for her toilet? Maybe, you know, there's a standard of 50 bucks to fix it?
No, we leave that up to the maintenance department.
Yes.
And then we also refer them to the conservation department, depending on what the leak is.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I receive a letter probably twice a month to college. They monitor that really well. Let us know if something is out of the norm. It's happened to me. I've had a $600 bill, and I paid it. I don't know, how often, Mark, does this occur, the extreme?
Extreme bills?
I'm talking about over 500 bucks.
Well, that's our average, our average problem is around $700 to $800. Those are the ones getting the credits, and we have 18 to 35 a month.
18 to 35 a month?
They get to that level. There's a lot that have several hundred-dollar bills because of a leak, but they don't take advantage of this because, again, it has a time limit. And if you have an old system, you know, you might get a bigger break in a month or two.
You know, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Lamerson, but maybe we should look in the direction of spreading it out further if it's a large burden. I think there's some responsibility on the homeowner in the business.
And even with the credit, they still pay a sizable bill.
But you know, a lot of times, like, you can't see that, you know, we talk about hearing it. That line coming in, I had it once in my home where... hearing it, that line coming in, I had it once in my home where we had this leak coming out on the line coming into the house, and you didn't even note it till you went out in the yard and you stepped down and you kind of sank a little bit. And, I mean, that can leak for months and months and months, and you never even get a held on it.
Jane?
I appreciate your trying to put together a formal policy. I think we need that, rather than having one person with the responsibility in the department trying to make a decision on what circumstances warrant a credit. But it's really difficult to structure a policy that addresses a myriad of circumstances. And we've heard mention here tonight of people who might be deaf and not hear the toilet running, or someone has gone for two or three months and they don't know that their irrigation line is leaking. I would like to see an appeal process from the policy, so that person with circumstances that they can articulate to a board, and maybe this would be the Water Use Committee of the council, I'm not sure what would be appropriate, but some other higher-level decision-maker who will sit and listen to the circumstances and decide if they can be verified or authenticated, and if they warrant some relaxation or variance from this policy.
Jim?
Thank you. How many repeat offenders, Mark?
None. Well, we only allow one per person per property right now. And again, the policy we're talking about only allows one per person per property every four years. There are, you know, sometimes people will move, tenants will move from one place to another, they're not property owners, so they move every couple of years, and we have had some who have used it twice.
So you notify the property owner?
No, we notify the, who the utility bill is with.
Yeah. Okay, so then, my question, how many did you say we have a week?
We have about...
250 to 300 a year. 250 to 300 a year.
Okay.
We have 23,000 water accounts right now.
Okay, then you were saying 800 abnormal readings?
Correct.
And now with an abnormal reading, does that trigger a letter?
It triggers either a letter or a call, depending on the size of it.
Okay. And do we have a way of tracking who fixed and didn't fix the problem?
A lot of times, they're not problems. They know they used the water, they had a family reunion or something, people in town, you know, they usually use this amount, they just use more. So it's not always a leak, it's just a higher use than normal.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
I'll make it quick. I still think that when that letter goes out, there needs to be a card that goes to share with the people an education value, that if they have an outdoor irrigation system and the weather's dry, Havelina will chew through your irrigation lines trying to find water. You will use a lot of water, you know, and those lines are not functioning the way they're supposed to. So when you can list those kind of things that the customer can have at his fingertips saying, this is your responsibility, Mr. Customer, and these are the things that you should be checking, it's just an education tool, and I think we need to have that available along with the policy.
And the letter does include how to check for leaks and where to look and those type of things.
Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor. And along those lines, Mark, if, before this comes back, you could provide us with copies of what the customer gets, and then let's maybe go back to the drawing board just a little bit on education to homeowners on how to regularly check for leaks, because obviously if you've got your irrigation running during the summertime, it might be smart to go out and check every week, or, excuse me, every month or two, to see what's going on with your water meter. So I'd like to see those before this comes back, but otherwise, I think, generally speaking, this is something that I can live with, with maybe a few tweaks.
Okay. You got all your notes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's move along. Item C.
Item 3C, progress report update on the ICMA recommendations for the Prescott Fire Department.
Good afternoon, chief.
Well, good evening, I think now, depends on what clock we're watching, I guess.
Don't push it.
No, no, no. Allison's passing out this evening's presentation. Dennis Light, Fire Chief, City Prescott. As I get started here, a couple of things I'd like to just kind of acknowledge. First off, coming new to the community as a fire chief, I've actually seen a lot of value come out of the ICMA draft report, and as we've looked through this and worked to digest some of the recommendations that were forthcoming, we took a similar, yet not identical, approach to how our colleagues in law enforcement approached it. With that, naturally, as I looked through my senior leadership team and enlisted their support, I'd like to really kind of acknowledge their candidness and the support as we move forward. Some of the issues that were brought forward are very complex, in that we don't have a lot of the detail available to move things forward right away. At the same time, there's some conversations that are very passionate, and with that, we kept a civil approach as we moved through the fire department and worked on it. And then it really allowed us to introspectively look at our operations and kind of our business models from a strategic point of view. And as we progressed with the presentation this evening, a couple of things to keep in mind. What I'm addressing here is primarily the strategic objectives. Two handouts, one is the presentation, and the other one is a status matrix that we will use to kind of trend and track both the strategic and the specific recommendations. Today's presentation's primarily about the strategic direction that the ICMA piece brought forward. Mayor is at your control of the mayor and council. If you'd like to interrupt for questions, I'm fine with that. If you want to hold questions to the end, however you care to run this is just fine with me, I can be responsive in both ways.
Our policy normally is both.
I understand that, and I'm sure we can work with that. A couple of things, back on August 26th, the representatives from ICMA came down and presented to yourselves and the greater Prescott community, kind of their first take and their cut at what the information they revealed during their study. During this, naturally, we had some, what I would call kind of first reactions. I distributed the report, actually concurrently with the presentation being presented here to my senior leadership staff. But I also asked that we take a window of opportunity a week to kind of just reflect on it. What I didn't want was to approach this in a knee-jerk fashion. We needed some time to digest what was contained within the report. And with that, they did that, and we kind of held a first reactions meeting on the day following Labor Day. So about a week had elapsed when we got the report, folks had that week to kind of digest it, and we went forward from there. And really, that first meeting was more of a gut check. We had some, we had to get some of the personalities out of the report and really kind of look forward at what the meat and potatoes of the report were. And that gut check, basically, we looked at the content of the report and kind of gauged some of the first reactions. And once we were able to move past some of the emotional pieces, that's when we kind of looked at some logical themes that became apparent. With that, we kind of categorized in that meeting themes within the report that we felt we could get behind as a, as a senior leadership staff of the fire department, at the base of the pyramid as the rank and file, and under direction from the policy group and yourselves as to where we want to move things forward. And we kind of came up with the five underlying themes, and those are kind of identified here. Emergency services and resource development, and I'll go into each one of these separately. Material assets and infrastructure, management of community risk, operational culture, and at first, we considered community engagement. Down the road at our follow-on and subsequent meetings, we kind of discounted that right at the moment and removed that as a theme, but there are some parts of this report that will ultimately need some sort of public discussion or engagement. So we understand the value of community engagement in this, but at this particular time, some of those are probably down the road in a way. Much like our colleagues in law enforcement, we worked to work for, towards a tiered-based system, and really, we ended up with four kinds of, I guess, categories that a recommendation could fall. One is a tier one recommendation, which we felt within a timeframe of anywhere from 18 to 36 months, we could achieve some degree of fruition in furthering that goal or that recommendation and have a logical outcome based on that. The second tier was kind of a tier two. Most of these revolved around some sort of fiscal need. I recognize as, as the chief executive officer for the fire department, it takes a little while to get in place the needed finances in order to further some of the goals and objectives, if there is a financial piece. So some of these fell in the 36 to 72 months. If there's a, for example, one of the recommendations dealt with a adding staff, well, you know, that doesn't just happen overnight, it doesn't happen in the immediacy, and then it has to be assessed, and then there's that internal need that we have to balance requests of positions amongst other departments and other department directors. So I understand the sensitivity and the timeliness, but sometimes things take time. The third timeframe that we looked at are those recommendations that have been accepted and are in some varying degrees of progress. Some of the report, because of the duration it took to assemble the ICMA study, some of those were already in the works by the fire department long before Chief Light's arrival and by predecessors, so we've continued to move those forward, and we've come to fruition on some, whereas some are tabled for the immediate future as we continue to scan the environment, as is kind of a vernacular used when we kind of watch what others are doing, kind of look what the state and Arizona Department of Health Services and some of our external stakeholders might be doing. And then some recommendations just really didn't make sense for the Prescott Fire Department. Much like our law enforcement colleagues, some of these, they were good recommendations, they're probably solid for other communities, but when we look at it here, it's probably one that doesn't really play into the Prescott community that well. A good example of that was the privatization, or not the privatization, but the civilianizing of the staff.
Somebody's phone is causing that next to cable.
Good catch. That said, the example that I like to use in this one is the civilianization of the fire prevention staff. Being the chief executive officer, one of my most valuable stints, so to speak, in my career has been doing some time in the Prevention Bureau. To civilianize that in its entirety, I think limits the upward succession planning within the Prescott Fire Department. So for the immediate future, I think the easiest way is continue to have a battalion chief or a division chief staff that particular position, and then we can evaluate it ongoing and see if we need to look at civilianization of that staff. So really, what we're maintaining is the status quo in that particular area.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Going back to that, is that what we're talking about with regards to fuels, reductions, et cetera, when you talk about privatization or some of that?
No, no. What we were referring to is, in the, in the recommendation came across that the fire marshal's position should be civilianized, one of the recommendations.
Why would that be a good idea?
It is not a good idea, and that's why we're...
I don't think so, maybe.
That's why we're discounting that for the current, for the current time. You know, environments change, so I don't want to say it's off the table forever, but for the immediate future and probably for my tenure, that is not something that I would look at.
Okay, the fire marshal ultimately is the individual that we, as a council, looks forward to with regards to recommendations in our codes and things like this, and I would think to have that civilianized is a bad concept altogether when the city at large is held accountable for some of the decisions that are made out of the fire marshal.
You're exactly right, and that's what we're saying, is we do not want to civilianize that staff member for the immediate future.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up to that, chief, because that was one of the recommendations. Is that something that, in other parts of the country, you may see where that portion of the fire department is civilians?
It's all over the place. It's, it's really specific to the jurisdictions. In the jurisdiction, for example, I came from, we've played at both sides of the thing, both sides of the table in 17 years. We had civilian, we had sworn, we had civilian, and I believe they're back to civilian now. It's not unusual as the environment changes, but I think from a succession planning within the Prescott Fire Department, not that I'm going anywhere, anywhere soon, but we need to build capacity within our organization, and the best way to fill the corner office is to have somebody with that skill and that, that skill set be able to move into that position.
And I'm comfortable with your recommendation there. You know, it's just wanting to make sure everyone was clear that, and it is popular in a lot of places to do it, and that may have been why it ended up in the report.
I highly suspect that be the case. I apologize, these next few slides are very busy, but we kind of addressed each of the, and again, the title page here is emergency services and resource development. Emergency services in this instance regards to rolling stock, delivering points of service, use of the big red trucks and delivering that service, along with cultivating relationships to some degree with our other stakeholders and other partners. Anyways, this is basically a laundry list of the, the specific recommend, or correction, the strategic recommendations that fit this theme. 12 fell into this category, which is the greater abundance of this. With that, a lot of what we did when we digested the work, everybody in the fire department wants, because we're a reactive nature, everybody wants to do it, we want to do it soon, and we don't want to wait for it. Well, calmer minds prevailed. We realized we can't do everything on the front end, we just don't have the capacity to, to offer solutions to these recommendations, all on the, all within 18 to 36 months. So we had to parcel it out a little bit. What we did is kind of prioritize the tier ones, and again, some of these are really to be developed, these seven will be developed through a sound strategic management plan and a standards of cover document. In some earlier presentations, we heard a lot about the need to plan for our future. For us to plan for our future, we have to kind of provide a roadmap, and through these two documents, the strategic management plan and what I envisioned for, moving that need forward and a standards of cover document, will be responsive to addressing these particular seven strategic recommendations.
Question on that, chief, is that something that you plan on doing internally?
Right, go ahead.
And then the follow-up question, you may or may not be able to answer, and that's fine, is do you have enough resources to do that, or is there something from our perspective that needs to change to help make that happen?
There's a couple of approaches to strategic management planning and standards of cover. I've worked, I've done both. One, either way, there is a fiscal component. If we're to do this entirely in-house, there's a lot of soft-dollar costs, and soft-dollar cost means hourly employees, because if we don't have participation from the bottom to the top of the organization, along with key community stakeholder participation in that, we're going to leave someplace unturned. If, you know, a hypothetical cost for that is, it's going to take longer to get to the end, but there's a higher economic piece that the money is paid to employees to work through this. The alternative, which is equally effective and probably at first take, is my preferred approach, because of, it would take added staff, it would take extra people to come do a consensus and get a plan done, because there's only certain talent, skills that people have to write these kind of things, would be using some things through, example is the Commission on Fire Accreditation International has a technical assistance program, and they have experts that we can call upon through, it would be an RFP, to use them to help us take our information and put it in a nice little package, tie the bow, and then bring it back to this particular group to kind of validate or, or further adopt those two particular documents. The other big key piece in this, and one of the strategic recommendations, is to dovetail our strategic management planning effort into what the city's strategic management planning effort has already undertaken. And, you know, short of drawing the process out, which I'd rather not do, because these two key, these two documents are so key for everything else in this report to getting done, that I would probably bring forward some sort of recommendation to use a technical assistance program to help us and kind of chart us down that path.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyways, these were the top seven in this particular tier and again, they're both addressed through the strategic management plan and the standards of cover document. Three in this same category were related to contingent on some degree of funding availability. Again, I realize that there's a finite amount of fiscal availability monies to fix some of this stuff and some of it is still in the kind of crystal balling phase. For example, the community paramedicine element, I've had some conversation with my colleague in, through the Joint Management Authority, Chief Freitag, and we're talking about community paramedicine. But there's a lot of stakeholders and really there's not, there's some good examples of best practices out there, but it hasn't, it's taking hold, but it hasn't fully been embraced yet. And then there's other pieces of the Affordable Care Act, which have a funding mechanism here, but to bring this to fruition, I really see it as probably in about a forty-eight month timeframe. We have to do some assessment of best practices, get out and visit a few folks and then kind of find what our niche is. We understand the demographics of our community fairly well and with that, I think we need to target our demographics for the risks that they're doing and then see where our niche is and then maybe what we look at is fire stations becoming a point of service in response to those community needs. Simple, you know, kind of simplify things. For example, there's a high prevalence of diabetic type of medicine needs here. Maybe we become the person that through community paramedicine interacts with that patient's need and provides them the blood glucose check, make sure they take their medication on a day-to-day basis. And again, we have to find what our niche is as we move community paramedicine. It's not something, yeah, we can pull this off from another agency and say, well, let's use this in Prescott. We have to tailor community paramedicine for the needs of Prescott, for the need of the Prescott community. And again, some of the best practices and I hammer on community paramedicine a little bit here, but some of the best practices are yet to be founded. I know there's two really kind of premier ones that are being undertaken in this state. One is in Chandler, Chandler Mesa or the East Valley and the other one is actually Rio Rico, where they're doing some good stuff and we need to go do some, we need to make a field trip and see what's working in their community. Rio Rico is probably more applicable than I would say the East Valley is because it's different demographics, similar demographics. There is an ongoing need to maintain currency with our two major fire districts here locally. We understand the value that they bring forward, but part of the emergency management function that's being suggested, it's going to take a little bit of time. We have a pretty sound Yavapai emergency management plan, but we also need to level it down and bring it down to the district and those levels. So we embrace that opportunity, it's just going to take time. The other two recommendations are either being considered or are either in place or not being considered at this time. The recommendation for staffing minimums as outlined in the report, those are already in place and they're going to be retained. By my direction, I've staffed the ARF apparatus now twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. It was approved through the appropriations piece to fund that out of the enterprise fund, airport enterprise fund. I felt we had to get off the fence post. We were bringing it down some days, taking it up some days and moving it around. Well, the consequence of those actions was there was times where the airport did not have an engineer on the ARF apparatus. So I've kind of curtailed that up and down from between sixteen and seventeen and we've determined it to be seventeen and we can meet that within the current appropriation and the budgetary restraints that have been placed upon us. The other one here is the continued environment of specific to community desires for certificate of necessity. I came from a community that was successful in attaining a CON. I can tell you it's a forty-eight to sixty-month process and with that, it really has to be driven by the community desire for the city of Prescott Fire Department to do ambulance transport, even nine-one-one ambulance transport. Right now at the state level, there's two fire districts, Northwest Fire District and Sun City, I believe it is, fire districts that have applied for their CON, as well as Glendale Fire has applied for their CON as of recently, certificate of necessity. Right now, from the day it's applied for and gains Arizona Department of Health Services approval, it is an eighteen-month approval process. I would venture to say and I, you know, right at the moment as just kind of the first look into the community, we're working fairly well with Lifeline Ambulance, their parent company, American Medical Response. And with that, I'd kind of like to work on fixing things that are not as efficient and then we can move forward if at some point the community decides and look at the CON option.
Where's that, where's that quality of service going from the switch? I mean, Lifeline was very much locally owned and operated. Now, I think someone referred to it as the Walmart of the ambulance companies is now taking over this company. What's your feeling on the level of service to the citizens there?
You know, it's always an odd dilemma when you have a private enterprise. Most of the stuff, most of the point of service that we deliver, the true emergency, life-saving, critical skill set is really only about probably six to eight percent of the total calls for service. So when you look at that, I think we put a fire truck with qualified paramedics on the scene with a high degree of reliability very well for this size community. We, indirectly, we do supplement the private enterprise in this case because there are certain life-threatening events that a two-person ambulance company doesn't have enough staff to manage. A full cardiac arrest, for example, it takes about five folks to manage a full cardiac arrest. So indirectly, we supplement them, but on the same token, the level of service that we get, they're showing up, we do have exceptions where it has a long response time or they don't have an ambulance available and we've been able to work through most of those. I have, you know, I've met a couple of times with the executives at the local level. I have a battalion chief that works much more in the weeds on that particular topic and we solve most of those problems at the very bottom level of the food chain. I think in my duration here, I've had one bubble up to my level in five months, so it's not a problem as I would describe it.
I think the biggest problem we may have had for a while, chief, was the being able to discern at the dispatch level whether you needed to dispatch your paramedics or your firemen. And I keep going back to the same element that I've never forgotten, when you got a problem in the street, you're calling for the cops or the fire department. You're not calling for an ambulance company, you're not calling for the mortician yet, you know, things like that. You're calling for the cops and the firemen. And I think it's really important to keep that in mind as we go through some of these things. You know, what's applicable for the city of Prescott may not be the same thing that's appropriate for, for example, Yuma, but.
No, you're exactly right and that's why I say, I don't think at this current time we should go down this path for a CON. But I don't want to negate that as a recommendation because I think we owe it to this community to continue to scan the environment for efficiencies and if efficiencies lead us to the path that say, you know, we really aren't getting the ambulances to the scene for the true life-threatening emergencies in a respectable and reasonable amount of time, then maybe that's something that we need to look at at that particular time. But for the moment, I think it is a very efficient system, the way it's done. Is there room for process improvement? There is, especially on the dispatching piece. You know, I think we've curtailed a lot of the red lights and sirens. Anytime you turn them on, it's a very high-risk event, whether we wanted it to be or not. So we're very discerning about using the red lights and siren where we can be and that piece of that starts in the dispatch center. Moving along here, the second main theme was material assets and infrastructure. Some of these, you know, much like the preceding theme, they also have some degree of time or in some cases, there's a fiscal piece that needs to be addressed. Currently, we're working to assess our current business model on property and asset management. One of my sources has been able to go ahead and get us some preliminary figures on if we are to fully embrace and move us over into the fields and facilities maintenance for our fire facilities. We've got some preliminary numbers on that. There's another piece of that and within the material assets is the McCormick Building. You know, it's been acquired. What I've asked as recent as this morning's staff meeting is we need to get, we, the fire department needs to have a greater understanding of our exact space needs and then we can determine the applicability or the feasibility to use the McCormick Building to look towards consolidating some of our, perhaps our training, wildland administration leaderships within those positions into the McCormick Building. What I don't want to do is just move forward without some sort of plan and then to find out, we don't have an office for this or we are too short or we're too condensed and all it does is multiply the problems that we currently have by being around. What I've asked and I'm pretty certain will be delivered upon is that that needs assessment specific to the McCormick Building is in my hands no later than January. So I can, and what we're looking at is some basic construction standards, office space requirements and then maybe we either scale it down, scale it up, whatever it is to fit the fiscal piece that it would take to get it, that it is tenable for office-type use. Couple of the others here, the tier-two ones, and I've kind of jumped around here, you can read it at your leisure. One of the elements is dealing with capital equipment replacement efforts for apparatus and I kind of added the other high-priced equipment, monitors for cardiac emergencies and some of the other equipment we use is also high-value. As well as one that we'll kind of share and jump between ourselves, the law enforcement and our regional partners, is the eventuality, I think that we're going to have to look at enhancing and building some sort of replacement for our current radio systems and mobile data computers. You know, the challenge that every law enforcement and fire department faces every day is the planned obsolescence of technology. As soon as we get things up to speed, we get the latest and greatest, they last us twelve, fourteen years, but much like you heard about other infrastructure, this infrastructure also becomes dated and, you know, through design or not through design, it's the planned obsolescence. So eventually things time out and we have to build new. And the radio system in here, I think from a regional perspective, there's some conversations going on within the law enforcement community that I'm privileged to. I know it's going on in the fire community, but that will have to be an undertaking of the significance and that's why the thirty-six to seventy-two months I'm moving some of this stuff forward. And then there's, the other piece to this is the Fire Services and Facilities Plan and I'll recap these at the end. But there were some recommendations prior to my arrival as to new stations, different locations, underserved communities. I think we need to take a holistic approach and really kind of develop, and in some communities, this is part, this becomes part of the general plan, but a Fire Services and Facilities Plan that's robust enough to keep our response times within the national norms based upon the density of the populations that they're serving. There's also has to be a general realization by the community that if you opt to build a house in a remote portion of town, far away from these sources, that your service level is not equal to what you might find in the more urban or more dense populations. Not that it won't get there and not that it won't be there within a reasonable amount of time, but it's really kind of an unattainable goal to say everybody will have four minutes or less ninety percent of the time when your community is so diverse and the geographical challenges that Prescott community presents. Management of community risk. We're in the process, I meet tomorrow with really two of the major division chief stakeholders in this, Chief Willis and Chief Devendorf. And a couple of things will be happening fairly soon and I'm going to start from the bottom up on this slide is one of the recommendations was to realign the duties and responsibilities from the former wildland division into that of community risk reduction. I think we've come to a crossroads that we're ready to kind of move that item forward. With that, there is two pieces that kind of are going to rest in support services, which is infrastructure, facilities, apparatus and emergency management and grants. And then there's the other piece on the code side, which rests in community risk reduction. What I'm proposing and I'm going to have a conversation internally to my own folks is that we will kind of co-share that between the support services division and the community risk reduction. Initially, when the org chart came out, everything was moving under one and then I fell into some challenges with workload management. There's not enough for one person to do and there's too much for another, but I think we've got a solution. I'll be bringing that forward to my own membership tomorrow and we can have some continued dialogue. The piece as far as wildland and wildland urban interface response for the foreseeable and immediate future, I really see the response piece coming out of the operations in the suppression division, that the mitigation effort will come out of what was the former wildland division, the ability to continue to embrace the firewise community, do the mitigation work that's necessary in the community to enhance the survivability should a fire occur. So that's a little shift.
So that it's clear to everybody, so that there's no question, if there is a wildland fire that starts in the city of Prescott or in the areas that we respond to, it'll be our red fire trucks that are the initial response?
It is, it has been and will continue to be. The operational forces of the Prescott Fire Department that are the initial response element within any wildland urban interface within this community, that is the correct statement.
And as far as risk reduction, brush cutting, clearing, all those things are going to be done by individuals who do not respond to wildland fires.
In the current fashion, that is exactly correct. They have no response capability and they have no response need written into the way it is as it currently reads. And I do not envision anything in the immediate future, immediate being twenty-four to thirty-six months that would change that.
And every one of the firefighters that's on our red engines has wildland certifications? Is that accurate?
That is an accurate statement. Basically, as part of the firefighter one and two curriculum in this state, there is a wildland component and whether they've attained that through Yavapai Community College, whether they've attained it through Glendale, whether they've gotten it through Mesa, Yuma, that is a pretty standardized curriculum because it's credentialed under the International Fire Service Accrediting Commission.
And then my last follow-up question, as far as the mitigation side goes, are you comfortable, at least for the next twelve to twenty-four months, that this is the viable approach that makes the most sense for protecting Prescott and getting towards our goal of being a firewise community, staying a firewise community?
That, there is a yes, but it's contingent upon. It is really contingent upon the success and the continued success of grant attainment to help fund and defer some of that cost off the general fund. Today, we are very successful. Chief Willis has been very instrumental in attaining and sustaining many of our grants. You know, today being election day, all things are kind of in the hopper a little bit, but I see nobody through their platform or anything else that is going to put that needlessly at risk. I think there'll be some cost containment initiatives, but that's crystal ball, so it's really hard to tell. But for the immediate future with the grants, at least through April of this year that we've got grants for and as we continue to do that, the mitigation piece is being added to and will be, continue to be fulfilled in this community.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. To add on to what Councilman Arnold was talking about, who would and who wouldn't respond to, et cetera. Fuel mitigation, wildland fuel mitigation. Fuel mitigation, wildland fuel mitigation, brush removal, the standard of performance of how well that's been done and how well it's been kept up is going to be under the supervision of the Fire Department.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that falls within the firewise community needs.
Thank you, here again. We don't look to somebody that's a private woodcutter to keep this community safe. We look to the fire marshal, we look to the Fire Department, that means you, Chief, to make sure that when we go in public, we can say, "You're well taken care of."
Oh, I agree. And that said, you know, there's always a caveat for doing things better, too. So I don't want to take anything off the table here today. I know there's an initiative by a lot of the insurance companies to assess properties for their fire safety perspective that's currently being undertaken. I know of at least one insurance company in the local community that's doing that. So maybe we, you know, not to discount it, but I think there might be an opportunity there to help fund some of that mechanism through some collaboration with some of the insurance companies as well to defer, not to compete with private enterprise, but at least get some of our fair share of that as well.
I don't think there's ever a point where we're going to run out of work with that. I mean, this is like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, you know? Once you finish, you start again. And even with the private sector, they could hop in and make it even better. And now, when they do these kind of brush cuttings, do they coordinate with the Fire Department as well, so we know what else is getting done? And to what level of quality job is being done?
There is some varying degrees of coordination. I know Chief Devendorf and Chief Willis has conversations with some of these folks, you know, through Powellick or the Prescott area, Wildland Urban Interface Council. A lot of those same issues are brought forward, and I think that council does a remarkable job in this community. I'm very pleased, I've attended two of the three meetings that they've had since I've been here, and people that live in the interface know they live in the interface and understand that there is some degree of personal responsibility to step forward. And whether they use it through private enterprise, enlist the services of the Prescott Fire Department, which we make available, I think we're doing a very good job. Can we have some improvements? No doubt, but for the most part, we do a very fair assessment in moving things forward. I mentioned one about the inspector position. It's within the community risk reduction. Again, it's just a matter of fiscal capability to fund it. The need is there for another inspector slash plans examiner. We're on the uptick on the economic, you know, we're kind of still clawing our way out of the trenches a little bit on the economic rebirthing, so to speak, but I think as we've gone through and seen that, I think it'll take some time for everything to get into place, but we will need to look at a position as was recommended by the ICMA study. The final eight recommendations are really stuff that's within our control that we can fix without, with little to no fiscal piece, but it does take a high degree of stakeholder involvement. The Prescott Regional Communications Center, you know, dispatches for a multitude of organizations, Fire Department, law enforcement. I have a very good rapport with my colleague who oversees both Chino and Central Yavapai now, Chief Freitag. We probably talk once a week at least. We use each other for sounding board. We have a shared fate attitude, and with that, some of the operational cultural things that were mentioned in the ICMA study, it takes a little bit of coddling, I guess, with your partners to make things move forward. There's some cost savings to be recognized, I think, in the long haul. None of it's immediate, but I can tell you, coming from a community that was the biggest player in town, we have great support amongst our associates, and I, for one, look to further that relationship and solidify it even more. And, you know, hats off to them, but on the same token, I also recognize, I'm here to serve the Prescott community, and I will advocate, and I think the report advocates as well, that we make sure we take care of our own, and then if there's resources still available, we're able to help and supplement those as well.
You know, when we were dealing with dispatch, it seems like they would be leading the charge on the change in technology. Just because, I mean, the stuff that they were coming up with, that's the lead and edge of that is incredible. Are we working with all of our other partners to try and come up with that technology at the same level, so we're all working with the same stuff, rather than saying, "Well, we have this, you can't talk with that system, we can't talk with this system"? Are we working with all the other guys to make sure we come up together?
I can speak primarily to the fire side of things, and yes, we are. I mean, we met not too long ago with the various stakeholders, the two districts I mentioned, along with the representatives from PRCC to work through some of those issues and work towards issue resolution. You know, one of the things, for example, and I'll kind of simplify it a little bit, are heart saver tones. The infrastructure's in place, it's just getting the policy piece for all agencies on the same, and we've reached fruition, those will be rolled out probably, I'm still hoping and optimistically before Christmas. So there's steps being made, but it does take a little bit of relationship and some phone calls. But the operational culture piece, again, most of this falls within our control arena, doesn't, not always have high dollar costs. Probably the one biggest thing of significance will be the recommendation that comes forward is, from this, was, it came in ours, but it didn't necessarily fall in the law enforcement to have some degree of redundancy of the PRCC and the ability to, should something develop in this building or in this street outside on Cortez, that we have someplace to relocate the dispatch center to that is equally efficient to dispatch the 911 calls. We had a testing of the system back, probably a month, month and a half ago, I believe you were informed of. Wasn't what I would term a system failure, but it took us a little while to work around it. Had we had a place to move into right away, I think that process would have been expedited probably tenfold over what had happened. And the particular time was, you know, it struggled for about two hours.
And Chief, along those lines, and since that incident, this is one that rises in the priority list for me, is seeing a backup system, understanding that they are not cheap. And with the changing technology, we would likely build something and then have to redo it every couple of years. But I would like to see a secondary dispatch facility developed somewhere in this community that we have the ability to quote-unquote "flip the switch to" in case of an emergency.
I understand that, and you know, the 911 piece is there to go to the county, but the balance of it isn't, and that's the biggest piece. And the secondary issue is still within what I would call the hazard zone. Should something happen here, us to relocate to there might not get us out of the hazard zone. And then the other piece of that is, it has to be reasonably survivable of an event, so that takes it out of the floodplain usually, takes it out of inclement danger. So it has to be thought through, but I agree, it is a priority, but there is a funding mechanism that's going to probably drag that out.
Yep, and you know, that again would be a priority from a funding standpoint, and obviously, we would need to bring our regional partners on board, but I'd like to see that conversation start sooner than later and it become a priority in our capital improvement budget.
I can appreciate that, and I actually have a meeting set with Chief Monahan tomorrow, so I'm sure I can bring that back forward with him.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Just kind of, to kind of wrap up and kind of put a bow on everything, kind of our next steps are the deliverables. First and foremost, and the highest priority right at the moment, we have to, excuse the expression, but I have to get off the fence on the McCormick Building. We're either going to use it, not use it, or figure a way to best use it. That is the latter choice is my preferred way. I saw things from small this, and then it grew into a big old EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and then it's morphed into something else. I think once we have a space needs assessment completed, then I can give a realistic approach as to us being able to fully utilize that building. And I'll go on the record here, basically, I'd like to bring that forward prior to the budget year discussions that commence in order to offer my best input on that.
I got a comment.
Yes, Steve.
And I truly believe that the face of the Fire Department doesn't belong in the basement of a fire station, and I think it needs to be more visible, something that the Fire Department's proud of. And if you have questions about burn permits or planned exams, or whatever the case may be, there needs to be a facility where somebody can go to to get their help that is somewhat centrally located that we can be proud of, and I think that's your spot, once you get your need assessment done.
Yeah, once I know the actual space that's required, I think we'll be able to make those determinations. And it may even come to the point where we leave the wildland, what was the wildland, the mitigation folks, we're going to leave them in seven, but the rest of the folks, the oversight or the, in this case, the division chief would move into that office. So I think we can make it, you know, but I've only looked at some really rough footprints. I think by, to me, by February, to yourselves, by April, we'll be able to get off the fence on that particular item. The needs assessment, develop a strategic management plan. If I don't have a roadmap to drive this organization that's truly supported by the base of the organization, supported by the policy, and meeting the needs of the community, the community has a role in this as well, then I really don't know where to drive the truck. So kind of our first step is to compile a strategic management plan. One of my thoughts, as I shared earlier, is to bring in the technical assistance program. There's a fiscal piece to that, but for me to do it in-house is going to drag it out 12 to 14 months, and we'll never get to fruition, is one of my concerns. And we need it before any of the other recommendations move forward. The other recommendation is the standard of cover document. This technical assistance program, it does both for us. They'll come in and do both and help us coach. We provide them the data, much like we did with ICMA. They provide us an end product. We vet the end product with yourselves, the community, my members of the department, and ancillary departments on, within the city government, city management, and then we can move forward and work towards some sort of adoption for both the standards of cover and strategic management plan. And the final piece of the planning piece, final P of the planning P is the Fire Services and Facilities Plan. We can guess where we think the best place is to put fire stations. What this will do is kind of share trip points. You know, if our population grows to a certain number, it should trip a fire station in order to address that needs. And, you know, you don't grow alongside with the community, but on the same token, you don't react to the growth of the community. So it has to be tampered in such a way that you move things forward at a reasonable step when it's fiscally responsible, while also being able to maintain some sort of sense as to being able to deliver the service. Unlike my law enforcement colleagues, they can bring on a one-person patrol car and enhance their ability to provide some degree of service to this community. My numbers are a little higher than that. For me to bring on a fire engine, it's three times three crews. It's really nine people. So it has to be grown smarter, yet responsive, and not on the cutting edge of the growth, but somewhere along the, kind of the bell curve. As the bell curve goes up, we want to catch it while it's going up still and not be so reactive that we're behind the power curve, just as an analogy. I also, or Allison distributed the project matrix that goes into the finer points. We'll continue to maintain that, update that on a fairly regular basis. I'd be honored to come back before you on a determined timeframe to give you some periodic updates. I think it's incredibly important to keep you informed of our progress along the way. And then the final bullet is to kind of maintain and our regional stakeholders to enhance the service levels and the objectives through PRCC to all the parties involved. You know, there's some past issues that have surfaced for one reason or another. I think that piece is long behind us with the change of leaderships that's taken place. I think we're for the betterment right now, and everybody understands that no one team can pull together this whole sporting event as we move down the road.
I've got one quick question out to drag out your presentation.
No, Councilman Blair, go ahead.
It's been excellent. But I do believe in the repetition of having another facility for your communications, but I also believe in combining resources when it comes to the secondary facility, like Yavapai County Emergency Management, along with the Sheriff's Department and the city of Prescott, to split those costs up so that we do have another facility in a different location. And it's been recommended by Yavapai Emergency Management for years that you can't survive with one communication center. And a lot of times, when you think you have an incident happening and the Sheriff's Department not on board or the county not on board, it creates a problem. So I think if, in the future, that group would meet together to provide or find a location to put in a secondary communication center that functions for all three would be a very powerful thing.
And you're spot on on that. I've had conversations with Denny and the Fire District folks. You know, a couple venues come to mind. One is their facility over off Commerce. Serta, out at the central Yavapai Regional Training Grounds, they have some capacity there that could replicate what we have here. So the bricks and sticks, I think, is the easy piece. It's the technology piece that gets a little bit antsy on the funding piece.
Thank you.
In conclusion, kind of what I presented here today is kind of just some general foundation work for some process improvement and some added efficiencies within the Prescott Fire Department. You know, we understand and we embrace, you know, we have to be responsive to the community needs, the desired levels of service, and the financial affordability of providing those services. And those are in kind of a priority there a little bit. You know, dollar cost, I think we have added value by efficiencies, but I don't want finances to drive the service. The service level should be determined, the community needs should be determined, and then we can work through the funding piece. With that, I'd be honored to entertain any questions that you might have. I know you've been at it for a while this afternoon, so your call.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Chief, I just have a couple of comments, and I guess we'll start it by, where do we go from here? You've moved us along, along the way from the recommendations that we all heard together. And the, I think that the management side is moving well. That's where it has to move well. But at some point in time, there will need to be some policy decisions.
That's correct.
Particularly when we start looking at money and other things. So what's the feeling here of what, at what level do we want to hear what's going on as opposed to that coming through management in a normal, normal time when something needs to be handled?
I think, I think he's got it laid out very well, and I would suspect, knowing the timeframe that he shared with us today, within the next six months or every six months, to give us an update on the process would be very positive. And no matter how small or how big it might be, that six-month update might be just as simple as to say, "Our assessment's done on McCormick Street, we're moving forward", you'll see that as a budget item for renovation, and then bringing us to the elements as they go forward, because this really is the track, you know, the track piece that you need. But I don't want to push it, but on the other hand, I don't want to see it sitting on somebody's desk.
Well, that, I have that equal concern, is this is not something, this has to be, and I shared it with my staff, I actually sent out the presentation a little earlier before I got started today, I didn't know it was quite as long as it was. And one of the things I stated in that email to my folks is, it's not a project that we're here with, it's a process. And if we don't follow the process until it's natural and, and with processes, there's never an end. It has to be continued, and it has to work towards improvement. And as soon as we get to one thing coming to closure, another thing has to be dusted off, and what I don't want is any of this to sit on a shelf somewhere. But before I can get anything moving, not me, but as an agency or within a department, we have to have the roadmap. And that's what's so key in this, is the strategic management planning effort and the standards of cover. Once those are defined, that'll provide us the tools and the mechanism to guide us.
Mayor, I just think you gave us a lot of stuff today, and you were being courteous and breezing through it pretty quick. You know, I'm going to take this stuff home and read it and digest it, and maybe, maybe we could have another meeting to discuss it, but I think it could almost be settled on a one-to-one meeting next time you're around, or...
I'd be honored to, you know, and, you know, some of this is, to be honest with you, a little bit of crystal balling. Because there's a lot of variables that go into it. Anytime, you know, state, you know, could change things. Anytime, you know, state, you know, could change things that impact the mitigation piece. You know, we have some degree of local control, but there's a lot of, especially in the public safety environment, there's a lot of outside influences that we don't have direct control over, and those are kind of the ones that are really intangible and hard to measure.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go to the next face.
Mayor and Members of the City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3D briefing on full-scale aviation exercise scheduled for November 8, 2014 at Prescott Municipal Airport.
Now, John, I expect this to be at least a 30-second. I was just going to comment on that. Mayor and Members of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to make a brief, five-minute, six-slide presentation regarding an emergency exercise drill going on at the airport this Saturday. This Saturday morning, around 10:00 a.m., we will actually, I want to say, light a live fire. There will be actual smoke. We'll actually have all of the mutual aid agencies respond to an exercise at the airport. So slide number one is basically just the announcement that we will be conducting an emergency response at the airport. And again, we'll have it in a remote area. However, you know, the sight of smoke and the fire obviously will be seen by the public until it's mitigated by the members of the Fire Department. And they will probably be hearing some sirens, again, as we're going through this exercise with all the mutual aid agencies. The full-scale emergency exercise is really a requirement by the FAA, if you will. The Federal Aviation Administration requires all commercial aid, commercial service airports to conduct a live simulated emergency exercise every three years. And the, to simulate, I'm going to say, an aircraft the size that caters to the airport, we're going to have up to 25 what we are calling casualties that will be on the site, that will be volunteers, that are going to go through the triage, through the Fire Department, and through the Yavapai Medical Regional Center. So they'll conduct the triage based on the appearance, what we call the moulage, which is, which is how the actual volunteers, if you will, victims will be dressed up. They'll actually have tags that will identify their condition, if it's a head injury, a broken, you know, limb, or bleeding, what have you, so that the Fire Department and the mutual aid agencies will actually be able to look at the victims and respond accordingly in their triage exercise.
You can just use labors for all of them.
But you'd have to be there, too. I do want to state, you know, there's 20 regional agencies involved, and there's 75 participants that will be attending this exercise on a Saturday. And so they are spending a lot of extra time. I want to, you know, specifically recognize the Airport Maintenance and Operations Supervisor Jamie Verish, as well as the Fire Chiefs staff that's been in this planning meeting, and the Police Department staff that have been in these planning meetings for several months, to make sure that, number one, we design an exercise that is according to all the FAA standards, but number two, that we exercise the utmost in safety and care when we're going through this exercise as a test of our training and mutual aid. So this is what a typical exercise layout looks like, if you will. You can see the aircraft accident at the end, and all the mutual aid agencies. There's several different Fire Departments that are involved. There's a lot of mutual aid, including the ambulatory services, a lot of county people that are involved in this as well. So that's what a typical exercise layout does look like. And again, we take this with the utmost of seriousness when we're going through this. We're testing the regional medical center communications and involving the Yavapai Regional Medical Center as well.
So do they close the airport for this?
No. This will actually be located at a remote, at a remote location on the airport. It'll be inside the fence, so it's not accessible to the public, and it's going to allow us to actually, you know, exercise our mutual aid agencies. But it will be, the airport will be still operable. We've coordinated with members of the Air Traffic Control to locate this at a remote So as far as public coordination, again, we are testing the Prescott Regional Public Safety Communications Center. And we're going to be testing our communications tree, so Mayor, expect a call Saturday morning sometime. And we will also, you know, be exercising all of the communications through the Police Department and the Fire Department for this exercise. So again, we've developed the exercise so that it's not in direct view of the general public. I will invite the media, if they want to attend, to contact me by tomorrow, and I'll be able to escort them to a safe observation area. And we've just issued a press release regarding this through the City Public Information Officer. This is actually what the incident looked like on Prescott Airport three years ago when we had this exercise. So you can see there is a live fire, there is going to be smoke. You can see the Fire Department out there, as well as member of the operations team. So that's exactly what we anticipate this to look like, once again, at the Prescott Airport this Saturday. Does anybody have any questions?
Is it, John generally going to be in the same place as before?
This one will not be.
It will not?
Yeah, this will be adjacent to the Forest Service, if you will, at the very north section of the airport.
Can you, can you get there in four minutes?
Our Fire Department can. Yeah, within three, actually, is our requirement.
Chief...
Don't put us so far away we can't get there.
Chief, with your manning change of the ARF, are all of those engineers going to be able to participate in some way, shape, or form for the benefit of the training?
No. First off, it's not practical to get everybody into this particular exercise. We just recently completed some ARF training out in San Bernardino where we maintained our credentialing. With that, where we're going is, hopefully by '16, all our engineers are what I would term ARF-qualified. That every fire engineer has a certain amount of recurring training that they have to accomplish in any given calendar year in order to fulfill that need.
Thank you.
Anyone want to help you?